Good morning, everyone. We're going to start now. Thank you. This is the public hearing on the Committee of the Hall regarding Bills Number 140144, 140145, 140146, and Resolution Number 140159. Before we start, I just want the members to know that the Law Department has to reschedule. Apparently, there were some issues with other headquarters flooding in the elevator banks and they are unable to get access to the building, so we're going to reschedule Law. Ms. Lewis, would you please read the title of the bills and resolutions?
Bill Number 140144, An Ordinance to Adopt the Capital Program for the Six Fiscal Years, 2015 through 2020 Inclusive; Bill Number 140145, An Ordinance to Adopt the Fiscal 2015 Capital Budget; Bill Number 140146, An Ordinance Adopting the Operating Budget for Fiscal Years 2015; and Resolution Number 140159, Providing for the Approval by the Council of the City of Philadelphia of a Verizon's Five-Year Financial Plan for the City of Philadelphia Covering Fiscal Years 2015 Through 2019 and Incorporating Proposed Changes for the Specified Fiscal Year 2014, which is to be submitted by the Mayor to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority, the Authority pursuant to the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement authorized by an ordinance to this council approved by the Mayor on January 3rd, 1992, Bill Number 1563-A, by between the city and the authority.
Thank you. Today, we continue the public hearing of the Committee of the Hall to consider various bills read by the clerk that constitute proposed operating and capital spending measures for fiscal 2015, a capital program, and a forward-looking capital plan for fiscal years 2015 through fiscal year 2020. At this time, we will hear testimony from the First Judicial District, and good morning.
Good morning. I'm John Herron, the Administrative Judge of the Trial Division, and also Chair of the Administrative Governing Board. And with me today is the entire leadership of the First Judicial District. To my left, President Judge Woodskipper; to my right, Court Administrator Joseph Evers; and behind me, and they will speak individually on behalf of certain initiatives and funding requests, are the President Judge of the Municipal Court, Marshawn Ifield; Administrative Judge O'Keefe of Orphans Court; Administrative Judge Dougherty of Family Division; and Administrative Judge Gary Glazer of the Traffic Court. And we will address individually items that you will find on our handout on the second page, and our intent today is to take you briefly through this handout, which hopefully will illustrate the strength of our position for the additional funds we are requesting, a very modest $3.2 million, and we'll explain that to you. Briefly, from our prepared testimony, I'd like to highlight certain portions of it for you. Whether a civil complaint seeking damages, a will contest, a family custody or divorce issue, a criminal matter involving a juvenile or adult defendant, our criminal courts strive daily to render timely, fair, and impartial decisions. The Philadelphia court system serves as a national model for innovative special programs under court supervision that improve the lives of nonviolent offenders by easing their assimilation back into society with limited resources, special courts, and volunteer organizations, and in so doing, it enhances the lives of all citizens of Philadelphia. Today, I will outline how our budget request for an additional $3.2 million will help keep these programs vital and effective. The FJD budget of $158 million, which consists of $109 million for the general fund and $48 million for grants revenue, is awaiting your approval. In large measure, this $158 million is paid for by the court system itself, and in fact, the FJD generates $51 million that is credited to the general fund from filing fees, fines, and costs and reimbursements. In addition, the FJD saves the city and its agencies nearly $5.5 million annually by waiving filing fees in the Court of Common Pleas and Municipal Court, as well as library fees. As a consequence of the total $158 million budget request, the FJD is in reality only seeking $49.5 million. And what we've done in the first page of that handout is attempted to demonstrate in that pie chart exactly what we're talking about, and if you look to the right and you see that pie chart, you'll see that the grants total $48 million, 31 percent of the budget; the revenue produced by the court amounts to $59 million, worth 38 percent of the budget; the cost to the city, once we deduct savings that the FJD generates, is really only $30 million. And we can illustrate those savings totaling $19 million by listing those separate components, which you will find at pages five and six of the budget testimony. One example of an innovative program established by the FJD during 2013 is the sequestration program. In this program, which we designed to assist the city, we are providing expedited form for the resolution of commercial delinquent real estate taxes. And what this program has done is it's generated in five months $3.9 million for the general fund and in particular, the School District of Philadelphia. The long-term benefits of this flow of income into our school system and the benefits for our children are incalculable. Over the course of this year, we anticipate that this program alone will generate $8 million a year in benefits for our schools. And what we are essentially doing is, instead of going through a much more lengthy sheriff sale proceeding, this program does not affect the title to the commercial real estate. What it does is it appoints a sequester, an individual nominated by the city, to collect the rents that would otherwise go to the commercial owner of the property. And by collecting these rents, it's leveraged to collect the delinquent commercial real estate taxes owed to the city. There is a significant benefit, obviously, in generating these funds. And this program, like others initiated by the court in cooperation with the city, identifies these areas where the court can expedite proceedings, of course, applying all the principles of the rule of law and due process. In addition to providing the delivery of fair, timely, and accessible justice to Philadelphians, the FJD should be recognized for its contribution to offsetting cost, generating revenue for other city agencies, and reducing costs through the specialty courts and programs we operate. Many of the items for which we are seeking additional funds and which will be addressed individually by the court leadership directly support these programs. An investment into our budget creates returns that positively impact our justice partners, other city agencies, and our citizens. If I can draw your attention to the second page of the handout. To the right, in blue, you'll see some important notes, and the first one indicates that 1/10 of 1 percent of the FJD budget is spent on overtime, and I cannot emphasize enough how carefully court leadership has been to utilize the funding provided by the city in a conscientious and efficient fashion. The second item indicates to you that we have saved over $3.3 million by attriting 70 positions. We are conscious of staffing and the cost, and we are constantly striving to reduce staffing to the minimal levels while maintaining efficiency. We have saved $5.3 million through the juvenile probation GPS monitoring program, and again, pages five and six detail over 30 different ways we've done to generate the $19 million in savings. And, most importantly, I should say that we've saved $6.3 million in waived filing fees for city agencies and innocent litigants. We do not charge the city for any filing cost on any filings that are filed when city litigation matters. And we've taken two hits in the past year. The city and the mayor's office are very careful in monitoring what we do, and we appreciate their responsibility in doing so. But when we returned the $8.5 million in conflict counsel monies, the city exacted an additional $300,000 from our budget that was not funded. So what the city did was said in prior years, there had been an overspending of conflict counsel fees, which, by the way, we have nothing to do with, and which, by the way, we are not constitutionally required to pay. And the reason we returned that budget funding was because the city is the constitutional obligor of those funds. And although we only received $8.5 million, the city required us to return $8.8 million, so we resorted $300,000 there. In addition, the city went to interest arbitration for senior probation officers and lost, and that loss was not paid for. The city negotiated with us recently, and in an effort to break the logjam, we agreed to pay the first annual salary to those senior probation officers, which amounted to another $300,000 out of our budget, which was not funded. The city, to its credit, agreed to pay future years. So we lost in those two transactions $600,000 from our budget. We're only asking for $3.2, and we'll now go into a brief explanation of those items. I will speak first. If you're following, I'm on the second sheet, looking to the left. I'll speak to the juror summons increased cost request for $819,265. In brief, what has happened is this. The right to a jury trial is sacrosanct. It's guaranteed by the Pennsylvania and United States constitutions. We, as a court, vitally believe in the right to a jury trial, whether it's a civil matter or whether it's a criminal matter. We have, under my supervision, 72 judges. Under my supervision, I have all jury trials in the city of Philadelphia, whether they're civil or criminal. We summon 700,000 jurors a year. Of the 700,000, 200,000 fail to respond. Thirteen out of every 100 people show up for jury service. The cost of summoning jurors who fail to appear and then re-summoning them, printing and postage, amount to over 14 percent in monthly additional cost over 2013. We have to do something to remind citizens of their duty. We have been forced to reduce jury panels by 10 each, so instead of a panel of 40 sent to a civil courtroom, 30 are now sent. Instead of a panel of 40 in a felony criminal courtroom, 30 are now sent. We reduced the number of jurors to homicide panels from 50 to 40. This is a crisis in the court system. We are initiating, for the first time in years, a Schoffler Court in May of this year in an effort to discipline those citizens who fail to appear. We need funding to cover the additional cost of summoning jurors, to operate the Schoffler Court, to operate a separate civil jury room. It is vital that we support the jury system, and we ask for your consideration, your careful consideration of this request for $800,000. So it's a privilege to appear before you. I'm going to turn the proceedings over to my colleagues. I would say, on a personal note, this is the last appearance for me. I'm 70 years of age. The Pennsylvania Constitution provides that I need to find another way to occupy my time, so I yield to the law, yield to the Constitution. I thank you for your courtesy and the privilege of knowing you over the years. I'll introduce President Judge Woodskipper to you.
Good morning, Councilwoman Clark, and members of council. First, it really is an honor to appear before you for the first time as President Judge for the Court of Common Pleas for the First Judicial District. I look forward to meeting with each of you individually and to collectively working together to forge a better city and a better court. I'm going to be speaking to you briefly about three matters that are in our budget proposal. The first is the need for Wi-Fi in City Hall and in the Justice Juanita Kidd Stout Center for Criminal Justice. And this isn't just a request to keep up with the Joneses, or because City Council has it and thus there are certain areas in City Hall that has it, but really, it is a necessity that we keep up with the ever-changing technology, and our public and constituency actually expects it. But more importantly, it permits us to maximize productivity. That means that we can have a workplace wherever we are. We don't have to be sitting at our desk, or at a cubicle, or at workstation, but wherever there's a hotspot, we can sign on, we can provide information, we can access information. For the purposes of our law clerks, they're able to update the judges on a regular basis. For the lawyers who come to court on a regular basis, it will enable them to access important information and to stop causing delays in the courtroom. It enables us to attend meetings at our fingertips. We can put in schedules, we can retrieve vital information. And also, in light of the fact that we have basically gone paperless, and we need to access our document management systems, we have e-filing, and with the ability to have Wi-Fi, this will enable everyone to access information regularly and at any place and at any time. This is a matter that's made for efficiency, it'll be cost-effective, and I think in the long run, it will be a very productive solution to the issues that we're having without it. The next issue I'm going to address is the need for a court information officer. What is needed is a full-time employee whose sole responsibility will be to be the media person for the courts. They will deal with the media outlets, they will look to provide information to the public, to educate the public, they will be responsible for developing and highlighting programs of the court, specific human interest stories that involve the court, and the programs of the court that are very successful and where the public really is not knowledgeable about. This individual will serve as our community liaison, they will be responsible for developing and understanding of the public of judicial issues that are facing the court, and overseeing our public access policies in terms of documents that are being asked for for the court. Among other things, this will make the system more efficient, save time, and money. The third item I'm going to address is the expansion of Mental Health Court. Mental Health Court was developed back in 2009 under a pallet program, which was funded by a grant from PCCD. Under that pallet program, this court was opened as a reentry court, which provides an alternative to incarceration for offenders who have mental illnesses and co-occurring disorders. And what's the point of the court is to prepare these individuals for reentry back into society by providing supervised supervision in the community, making sure that they are in supervised treatment facilities, and that they are medication compliant. This was developed with the collaboration of not only the courts, but with the Department of Behavior Health, the Defender Association, the District Attorneys Association, as well as the probation department and the prisons. The effort of this is to make sure that we are balancing justice, treatment, and public safety, while at the same time, reducing the jail population and our criminal justice costs. Once receiving that grant from PCCD, we opened with a very modest population of around 29 individuals that we supervised between 2009 and 2010. Move forward to 2013, with more awareness of mental health issues, we are now supervising over 3,000 cases, and that comes through approximately 265 individuals who are being supervised by this court under the Mental Health Court program. As part of this program, they are giving designated probation officers, who provide more intensive supervision, they have status listings before the judge, and they're giving longer probation sentences, as well as stringent program sanctions. When the program first started, it only had one level of treatment care. As we moved forward, it was obvious that we needed to have different contingents of treatment care, so we now have six tracks. Three of them are different levels of treatment. One is a track that looks at veterans, the other is what I call the catch-all track, individuals who don't fit into the other tracks, and then we have a competency track for individuals who have been found incompetent to proceed in their legal matter, and their matters are then transferred to Mental Health Court. We seek to restore them back to competency, and then they're either returned to that judge for trial or sentencing, or they can resolve their matter in Mental Health Court, as many of them do. As a reentry program, we provide a unique opportunity for individuals to reenter society given the support and tools that they need to be successful. The effort is to stop the revolving door of incarceration and to provide support for law-abiding citizens. As we seek to expand this court, we look at things that are necessarily missing. We are missing resources for housing, for treatment, because we compete with the very same bid that all the other problem-solving courts need. We look, in the long run, to develop a transitional assessment center so that individuals can be released from prison into a transitional housing setting, where DBH can then conduct a comprehensive assessment, and then send those individuals to appropriate treatment We, as part of our program, have saved the prisons in the city quite a bit of money, because we look to get these individuals out of prison earlier and to reinstate their ability to be law-abiding citizens. As part of that, we seek to have a counselor who can continue to work with them in terms of providing the social services that they need, and to work with some partnerships that we've already developed. For instance, we work with the Homeless Advocacy Project to work to cut on their social security benefits and their disability benefits, so that they will qualify for the services that they need. Also, due to the implementation of the state of a new document management system for problem-solving courts, which requires the tracking and coordination of data collection with all of the collaborating partners, we need to have an individual who's able to do the input for that information to establish a mental health system with a mental health system-wide database and to obtain access to mental health networks. Additionally, because of the savings to the prison, which amount to, in 2013, over $176,000, these individuals come back into the system, and we need to keep them encouraged with their treatment compliance while improving their individual lives and ensuring public safety. One of the things that we do at Mental Health Court is we have a goal achievement ceremony, as opposed to a graduation, because you never graduate from mental health. What you do is you learn to monitor it, and to live with it, and find the supports that you need to adjust to it. So as part of our program, we have a yearly goal achievement ceremony, where we recognize even the small achievements, and some of them really are small, the fact that they can take their medication without assistance, that they're working on their GEDs, that they're living independently, and we seek to keep them encouraged. So having a motivational interviewer, a person who is able to do that, to encourage them and to monitor them, is necessary as well. Some of the importance of the things that they're doing is not only learning to monitor their medications, but we have individuals who have returned to school, who have been reunited with family members, who have completed successfully their court supervision, but continue to receive the services of DBH as a result of their participation in Mental Health Court. So what Mental Health Court is seeking to do is not only to have treatment compliance, but to improve the individual lives and ensuring public safety. As Mental Health Court continues to grow, even with fewer resources and higher demand for the limited services, housing, and placement, we have become aware of the additional needs of looking at those individuals with intellectual disabilities, and that will necessitate adding even additional track if we can find the appropriate resources and services to do so. As we become more aware of these mental health issues resulting in criminal charges, we must be prepared to meet this additional demand. It will not only save prison costs, but it reduces crime, and it saves lives. I hope that you will consider the importance of this court and the need for its expansion. I thank you for this opportunity to present this information, and I look forward to a strong partnership in the future.
Thank you.
I'd like to call upon Administrative Judge O'Keefe to speak to the guardian investigator, which is the third item on that list that we have. Judge O'Keefe has been one of the longest-serving administrative judges in the Court of Common Pleas.
He's saying that because I am old, and he keeps telling me I am one week older than he is.
And we leave together.
Mr. President and other city council members, again, my name is Joe O'Keefe, and I am the Administrative Judge of the Orphans Court. One of the most important functions of the Orphans Court is to, excuse me, protect the rights and property of those unable to do so themselves. This often takes the form of adjudicating an individual, an incapacitated person, and appointing a guardian or guardians to take care of that person's personal and financial needs. Pennsylvania has the fourth-largest elder population in the country, and Philadelphia in particular, has seen an explosion in its elder population, with almost 20 percent of the city over the age of 65. Given this large group of people that Orphans Court is serving, the one feasible way to maintain any protection for our adjudicated incapacitated person is to only appoint a guardian who is capable of looking out for the best interest of that incapacitated person, and to require these appointed guardians to file inventories of all the incapacitated person's property, as well as file annual reports. In 2013 alone, there were 382 new petitions to adjudicate someone an incapacitated person. The year before that, there were 371 new petitions. The reports that come in have to be reviewed, and it takes a significant amount of time. Additionally, Orphans Court is without the resources to do any significant review of the potential guardians prior to and after the incapacity hearings. The increase in the city's elder population is expected to continue, thus further taxing the Orphans Court ability to protect them. This will also result in an increase in the amount of reports that are filed every year. I believe it would significantly benefit the Orphans Court Division, as well as the aging population of the city, to have an employee solely dedicated to reviewing the qualifications of proposed guardians and the reports and inventories that the guardians are required to file. Last year, we received almost 1,000 annual reports, with each one representing an individual with their own particular needs and different circumstances. To that end, I am requesting $44,000 to hire an Orphans Court guardian investigator who would be tasked with reviewing the qualifications of guardians and reviewing the required inventories and annual reports. And thank you for your attention and courtesy.
Thank you, Your Honor.
President Judge Ifield will speak to the fourth item on the list.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President, and members of council. As indicated, and although I know many of you or most of you, my name is Marshawn Ifield. I am President Judge for the last five years of Philadelphia Municipal Court. I am here to seek funding for what I consider to be very critical aspects of the services we provide in Municipal Court. I'd like to begin with the critical service that's provided for the emergency protection from release. We have a staff that works non-traditional hours, most typically between 5:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. on a daily basis. They work graveyard shift, they work on holidays, they work multiple days without taking any break, recently during the snow emergency. And the monies that go to pay the salaries of the people who staff that unit at some point and for many years were paid through a state grant. I'm here because the state- I'm here because the state has issues, and in the course of reviewing their budget issues a couple of years ago, they actually cut the funding that provided the services for -- that we provide. Due to fiscal management and monies that had actually been received that were in excess of our needs, we were actually able to stretch those monies for approximately two years after the grant ran out. We are now beyond that point, and at the moment, I am seeking a total of $225,000, which would go to pay the permanent master, who -- and all of our masters, I should add, are law-trained, the per diem masters, as well as the clerical support services. And I suggest to this body that there's actually no price that can be placed on the lives that are saved by the services that we provide. The individuals who come down are victims of domestic violence, they are in need of emergency services, and we're the only facility that provides those services at the times when the family court building is closed and there's nobody operational there. If I can just take you back, I'm not sure how many of you actually remember, years ago, and I'll go back to the days of the police administration building, where the victims of domestic violence actually had to go down to the PAB. It's a time when we had the arraignment courts down at the PAB, and frankly, they were down there oftentimes battered, many times no place to go, with children in tow, competing with the other work that was being done by the emergency -- by the arraignment court magistrates, who were there arraigning people, they were there providing services to the police officers who needed search-and-seizure warrants that were signed, they needed -- they were under time constraints in order to avoid lawsuits, to make sure that defendants were timely arraigned. And during that time, they had people in need of immediate attention, who were just waiting until there could be a break in the proceedings. During fiscal year 2013, there were 2,550 individuals who received emergency protection from abuse petitions. In addition, there were 2,200 people who actually arrived, looking for some direction, were not actually eligible for the emergency protection from abuse, but they had people there dedicated solely to their needs, who were able to provide referrals and other places to go. We've come a long way in properly treating people who are subjected to domestic violence, who need emergency attention. And the monies I'm seeking is to be able to continue the good services that we actually provide, so that the 24/7 operation continues to exist.
Thank you very much.
And I'm moving on to one other request that I have. And I think over the years, and certainly since I took over as president judge, one of the things I think we've done extremely well in municipal court is the diversion programs that have expanded tremendously. And I would note that the diversion programs obviously couldn't come about with just the input of the court. We've worked collaboratively with our justice partners, the DA and the Defender Association. But since I've become president judge, we have opened a vet court, the Small Amount of Marijuana Program, The Choice is Yours, AMP, which stands for the Accelerated Misdemeanor Program, AMP Two, which was able to take additional people in, Project Dawn Court. This year, we began a domestic violence diversion court, as well as the mental health cases. Actually, I probably have a courtroom full of people waiting to deal with mental health issues at the moment, that we have handled. And I say that by way of background, that with all of those courts that have opened over the last five years, I have not been here looking for any additional funding. And in fact, we did all of these programs with the existing resources that we had, with people taking on added responsibilities, there were no additional judges, et cetera. When we started Project Dawn Court, which is a trauma-informed diversion court geared towards women who have had multiple contacts and convictions for prostitution, many of whom have been abused, they come with mental health, drug, and alcohol units, we were able to start the program with a grant. And the one position that the grant actually funded was a coordinator. The grant expired, the program has continued, and in fact, we were successful plumbarily seeking JAG funding for that position. However, I believe that it's a position that needs to be expanded with the extra -- the additional programs that we have, and we have a tremendous coordinator. We believe it's important to be able to expand what she is able to do in the various programs that we would like her to be able to participate in, and when you're dealing with the regulations involving federal funding, it makes that difficult. She has been working extremely well with outside agencies, she is trauma-trained, she has worked with people trying to educate other people in terms of what to look for and how to assist people with varying needs. So for this one program, for this one position, I am seeking funding from this body to continue and expand what she's able to provide to the court.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
And I'd like to introduce Administrative Judge Dougherty, who will speak to the issues involving Family Court.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. President, council members. I'm Kevin Dougherty. I'm the administrative judge of Philadelphia Family Court. Each day, every day, I, along with supervising judge Terry Murphy and all the dedicated Philadelphia Family Court judges, see the worst that life has to offer our children and families. Each day, every day, we strive to try to redeem one social condition, reunite one family, or take one child out of an abused environment, and create hope. Fortunately, at the end of this year, the two courthouses, one at 34 South 11th Street and 1801 Vine, will be united at 1501 Arch Street. With the consolidation of our courthouse, we'll become a consolidation of certain services that we did not anticipate or expect with the reunification of Family Court in and of itself. I come here today seeking assistance from council, so that we can participate and continue doing all the good work. Before I begin, I need to share with you and celebrate some of the accomplishments of Philadelphia's Family Court. With regard to my juvenile division, as a result of the hard work in probation officers and the stakeholders in my building, with -- which includes the district attorneys, as well as the public defenders and all the necessary providers, we have seen the lowest number of petitions filed in Philadelphia for delinquent matters. Delinquent matters are juveniles who are accused of what would be called crimes. I currently have about 3,800 kids on probation. But the reason we are working so well is that we have created programs with little or no monies, just on our sweat equity, so that we can help our kids succeed. People don't realize that in the juvenile law, if you're 14 years or older and you're a judge delinquent of a felony, you're a convicted felon the rest of your life. As a result, we take your fingerprints, we take your photograph, we now take your DNA and charge you $250 for it unless we can find undue hardship, which the majority of Philadelphians do. We then give each offense what's called a prior record score. What that means is we are guaranteeing you entree into the penal system. The most points one could acquire would be six points. Stealing a car is one, selling drugs, two, aggravated assault could be anywhere from four to six. The system that has been created has been one that expects our children to go to State Road where our prisons are, as opposed to State College where we hope them to be. Under my leadership as the administrative judge by the goodwill of the Supreme Court, I've been able to create such diversionary programs that we now have the lowest number of docketed petitions. My job is to make sure that I separate the good kid who got caught up in a bad way from the bad kid that needs to be put away. But if that child's going to be put away, he's going to be educated. This is not adult. This is not prison. This is an opportunity to develop the competencies of children and to make sure that they understand right from wrong, and they realize how good they have it. And I have to tell you, I think it works. Part of the diversion programs that we've had was the implementation of GPS. I've worked well with Commissioner Amory Ambrose. As a result of a $500,000 investment with regard to GPS, I've been able to place, I guess statistically, I'll give you the numbers. In 2013, we had over 1,400 youth monitored on GPS, as opposed to placing them in detention. They -- an average of 52.4 days. I had 800 of -- 804 of their youth successfully complete the GPS, which meant they weren't penetrated and they didn't have to be placed. When you look at the GPS and the cost of a GPS, it costs me $6.75 a day. The average length of stay, however, if I were to place the child in a community-based detention center or our juvenile detention center, would be 398 -- an average of $398, as opposed to the $6.75. So when you calculate the cost, and an average length of stay in a detention center is about 17.05. When you calculate that cost, Family Court, as a result of this investment, has saved this city $5,249,829.35. That's just one aspect of making sure our children don't penetrate the system and making sure they have an opportunity. We've developed other programs, and we've done a lot of good things. In domestic relations, we are inundated. As we all know, we are the largest, poorest city. As a result of being the poorest city, the majority of our people don't have the funds to necessarily pay the filing fees that are required. And Philadelphia County has probably one of the lowest filing fees across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. When you look at the number of judges, I have 26 judges, counting Judge Murphy and I, and we both are sitting judges while we administer. But when you look at the type of numbers that come through our courthouse, permit me. In 2013, we had 1,633 new complaints and divorce filed, despite the fact that we disposed 1,800. But there were an additional 11,682 divorce-related pleadings. With regard to support, in 2013, we had 43,539 support filings, including approximately 27,145 new complaints. With regard to protection from abuse orders, we had about 11,300 new, we disposed about 12,000. So we're talking in custody, which most people are now aware that we have an incredible backlog. We had 24,000 custody-related filing in DR last year. More than 11,000 are seeking to establish or modify a custody order. We're doing a lot of good work with few judges. However, the consolidation of the new courthouse, we have to take into consideration that my court, unlike the other courts, are the most volatile. As I said, the worst that plays out in one's home is dramatized in the courthouse. Sad to say, of all judges across the United States that are brutally murdered or assassinated, family court judges lead the most, are the largest number. The most violent incidents usually occur in our courthouses. Thank God, under our watch, we've only had minor incidents or maybe a few serious incidents. That's as a result of our vigilance. But now when we consolidate into a new courthouse, I'm going to be lost. Historically, I have made a request and submission to this body of $1.1 million. Let me try to explain that, because it sounds like a lot of money. But at the end of the day, I believe our children are worth the investment. I'm looking for central services. 34 South 11th Street, the majority of my employees over there are 4D general -- 4D employees. That means I'm getting money from the federal government to assist for solely child support The child support predominated the entire courthouse. Of 400 employees, 350 were on the 4D fund, and about 50 to 58 were under my general fund. In my courthouse at 1801 Vine where I sit, the majority of my population is general fund, and my largest population, the most dedicated, are my probation officers, and they take the entire second floor. I have three floors at 1801 Vine and three floors at 34 -- two floors at 34 South 11th Street, three. I guess you can say three, the top is administration and some master offices. We're going now, thank God, into a 15-floor building. 15 floors is going to require a lot of security protection. I'm able to transfer our central services, but I have to transfer these central services, those employees at 34 South 11th Street, they can no longer be on 4D, because the building now, their proportion has shrunk to pox -- I think we're estimating maybe about 25 percent of my building? That's a minimal portion. Yet, probably the most volatile is either in the support hearings or in my dependency. So I have to make sure that we have sufficient administrative central services staff, as well as security. Most people don't realize, while the city owns 1801 Vine, we rent 34 South 11th Street. So as a result of the contract, we're not paying for the custodial. We have a security staff, it's a contracted service out of our budget. I'm losing those custodial staff, I'm losing those security guards unless I merge them with my own. In my building, I'm going to be able to have custodial, but I only have 11. So when I'm looking at custodial, I'm looking, hoping to increase it to approximate additional 13 with my 11. That's going to be about a $363,000 request. When you look at my central services and merging approximately 21 employees from my 4D over to the general fund, we're looking at 700,000, 772,000, so it's approximately 1.1. I come to you to say, let's not forget that it's -- I'm not here asking you all to submit 1.1 million dollars to our budget to support the Family Court. I have to keep our children and our families safe. I have to maintain a clean condition. Imagine everyone, every one of us here knows someone who has experienced divorce, support, custody, abuse, neglect, or knows someone who has had some DHS involvement. People are insecure, people are hurt, they're not invited into my building, they're summoned by subpoena. They don't want to be there. If we can at least move to make a clean facility, have a clean bathroom, let's get down to basics, have toilet paper in the public restroom and some soap to wash their hands, provide the dignity to a family in disarray, is that too much to ask? I've worked tirelessly to make 1801 Vine as clean and nice as possible. I think I've done a good job at that. I have every intention to maintaining this new courthouse to the same quality that I've tried 1801 Vine. I can't do it without the custodial. If I have to submit to my budget and only those monies allocated to my general fund, then that means I'm going to have to deprive somebody of something. Some program's going to suffer. I find it hard to fathom that I may have to withdraw a program or divert employees so that I can maintain a quality of life that's basic and commonsensical to each and every one of us. In essence, I think we've done a fabulous job. I cannot be more thankful that I've been able to lead the members of Philadelphia Family Court, who really are dedicated. Going back again, talking about services, and I just want to reiterate, I can't do it without our support staff, I can't do it without the employees. In my juvenile delinquency, it cannot be done without my probation officers, and I'm struggling already with a limited number of probation officers. And we are trying to work this through so that we can restrict their caseloads, so that they're not overwhelmed, try to develop more innovative programs, so that the kids are more acclimated to quality of life issues as well outside. I can just at least end this by saying, we've done a good job. I anticipate doing a better job. 1.1 million dollars, I think, is well worth the return on my investment. Finally, which I forgot to say, with my dedicated staff at 34 South 11th Street, we were able to collect $164 million worth of child support. Without those monies, our children would go without. We created a networking for jobs, that is, to make sure, in lieu of incarcerating a parent for not paying child support, which then ultimately means, since I'm not paying, you can't see Kevin, we have dysfunctional and broken families. The reason is, half the time, our men are unable to have a job. We created, years ago, networking for jobs. It's a phenomenal program, but I could share with you, let me just, I pulled some stats on that, just to kind of brag about the hard work that we're doing in Family Court. Here you go. My networking jobs I've had, we've been able to enable 72 percent of all people who owe child support to find jobs with an hourly wage of $9.22. 29 percent of those jobs provided medical benefits. Of those people, 23 percent of them, usually men, had misdemeanor criminal backgrounds, 26 had felony criminal had felony criminal backgrounds. As a result of this program, we collected a total of $20 million that is added to the 164. I think that's really good. I think what we're trying to do is keep our prisons empty, our coffers filled, and children to have food in, on their plate and a belly filled with food. Thanks for taking the time and please consider my request.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Your Honor.
That completes our testimony. I would say that the court leadership, we're all working judges, all of us have a caseload. We've taken our managerial obligations seriously. We've been careful in spending city funds and saving city funds. We understand that we have an uphill fight today. We need eight votes supporting us. And we understand that we have failed in prior years. We hope for your understanding and consideration. Obviously, we are passionately in favor of what we do and how we do it and believe we do it well. We hope to have your agreement on that. We stand ready to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Your Honor, I'm assuming there may be questions that may be for all of the judges we have, all our members are interested, how are we going to handle it? As opposed to having--
I'm going to ask the colleagues to come up, if they will--
Yeah, can you please?
--to be here and then they'll identify the question as in their area and speak to it, if that's acceptable.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Yeah, I said, you know--
Okay.
Walking back and forth will take some time. And everyone here, thank you. Thank you for your testimony, all of you. Just real quick, a couple of questions, and I just want to make sure, I'd like to categorize them so we don't have too much back and forth. First, and Judge Skipper was, I want to apologize, had I known that you all were looking to get Wi-Fi, we would have contacted you when we purchased ours and we probably could have bundled it and gotten a better deal. So I want to apologize, we just weren't aware. But we understand the need to have the ability to have Wi-Fi in the office. Maybe when ours needs to be revisited, we can bundle our services and we can get a better price.
We appreciate any consideration.
Thank you, thank you so much. The civil jury room, Your Honor, where is that currently?
We do not have a civil jury room.
So you don't have--
It's been on the boards for years and years and years. We are close to a contract and to an anticipated completion date of September. It would be located in the old municipal courtrooms, 195 and 196. It happens to be a perfect and suitable area because there's outside independent access so that the jurors can come in from outside of City Hall without going through the security at each of the corners of City Hall.
Okay.
It would provide not only civil jury space, but space for three grand juries that we have operating. One of the pressures on our jury system is the fact that we began by virtue of a Supreme Court of Pennsylvania rule, the first indicting grand jury, which safeguards witnesses and victims and obviates the necessity to go through preliminary hearings. So for these very specially identified cases, and there were some 750 of those last year, that is a special indicting grand jury and we summon a significant number of jurors for that. That will also be housed in that civil jury space along with the other two presently running investigating grand juries. So we have an indicting grand jury for victims and witnesses threatened, and then we have two investigating grand juries that take cases from the district attorney's office.
Okay, and that would be housed in the same space?
Yes.
And where are you in terms of funding for that? You said you've contracted--
We have committed funding from savings over the last several years from the trial division budget and other budgets that will give us about $1 million for the actual build-out cost. We do not have funding for the additional cost for bringing in the jurors and for the staffing necessary to handle these burdens of the grand juries, the investigating grand juries and so forth in the operations.
Operations, okay. In the sequestration program that you've been working with the city of Philadelphia, you talked about the ability to collect rent essentially for commercial properties in lieu of them being able to pay the arrears and their taxes. Does, how exactly does that work? Maybe you're not the department because you are supporting the city. My question is if there's a functioning business, and I don't know, maybe the budget director may have to answer this, if there's a functioning business and they're, based on their unwillingness to pay the arrears and their delinquent taxes, you essentially come in, the government, and says, "We're taking a rent." Isn't it kind of a catch-22 that that business would go under if they're no longer able to have revenue coming in to continue to operate that business if we take the revenue that they do have and therefore that business goes out of, out of business?
Well, I am the sole judge in charge of the sequestration program. It is a, we consider it a commercial matter and so it goes into our commerce program, a specialty court, if you will. And so each Monday, I hear these matters that are scheduled. Most all of them result in settlements. So I do not get involved as the judge in what effect that has on the businesses. My speculation, if you will, is that owners of these commercial properties are delinquent in their taxes because they have enjoyed no enforcement threat. And when the enforcement threat is there, and that can only be offered by a viable, efficient court system, when that enforcement threat is there, then the commercial property owner sees the light and settles with the city in the arrears of real estate taxes owed. If the individual doesn't see the light, then the leverage the city has by statute is to ask the court to appoint a sequester, an individual who will then receive the rents. Those rents go back to the property owner as the delinquent city taxes are paid or settled. So I've not heard of a single instance where a commercially viable enterprise with revenue and rentals coming in has gone out of business because they settled up their delinquent real estate tax. There may be some out there, but that is an issue that you'd have to address to the city revenue department.
Okay, well, we'll do that. Warrant officers, you have various warrant officers from the courts, is my understanding?
We do. We have a pre-trial area and employ about 55 warrant service officers.
And they work for all of the various courts or one particular court, or do they just work for the First Judicial District?
First Judicial District, but they're primarily employed in the common pleas and municipal court area. They have a variety of duties. One is to actually implement the hookup of the electronic monitoring units. Another is to go out every time there's a beep that says that the individual on the electronic monitoring unit has strayed. Another obligation is to go out and serve warrants on individuals who have failed to appear. There are some 35,000 active warrants out there and they're prioritized. And so those 55 officers respond to those three areas principally.
Do we also have warrants for the juvenile division or family court?
I have, I have a warrant unit, but they are made up of probation officers. What I have is I have a group of probation officers who are my juvenile enforcement team. They're not case managing. They're working with the Philadelphia Police and all necessary law enforcement to pursue targeted areas where we have heavy juvenile violence or gang activity. I also have my YVRP, and my YVRP is, works in hand and glove with Jett and the police in making sure we can execute warrants for those juveniles who have bench-warranted as a result of a serious offense or escaped from a juvenile delinquent facility. But I do not have a specific warrant unit and specific funding for it. I utilize that through good, working well with my chief and the probation officers.
Okay, so when there is an outstanding warrant for a juvenile, then these people are dispatched to find that person at the address, the last known address or whatever--
Based upon, we've created an internal priority list for those individuals in which Jett and/or YVRP bench-warrant unit will pursue.
And they, do they work with the police?
Yes.
So--
Matter of fact, I just transferred my juvenile enforcement team down to the new Delaware Valley Intelligence Center, DIVIC, in South Philadelphia, and my YVRP probation officers, and both are arm-bearing. I've transferred them out, I've worked with DHS and I have them situated out, the new youth study center, the new juvenile justice service center.
Okay, in any event, is there a notification to that particular location prior to or is there, is there just, they're assigned, they go to the property, and how does that work?
Combination of both.
They have to notify--
We still have a general, the actual assigned probation officer has, makes the attempts, will go to the home, the last known residence, speak to the people, speak to the family, speak to the community, trying to locate and bring the individual in. Many times, part of our probation officers will attempt to reach them. If they do, they convince them to come walking in. I would prefer that they voluntarily surrender as opposed by the use of law enforcement. However, for those individuals who have AWOL'd or ran away from a delinquent placement or have a serious outstanding felony, we then, with a bench warrant, we then target those areas and try, target that individual and try to get them. We work hand in glove, as I said, with juvenile intelligence, I mean criminal intelligence and other law enforcement agencies when they're targeting certain specific areas of Philadelphia. My team also works with Focus Deterrence, which is in South Philadelphia, concentrating in the Point Breeze area as well as, Philadelphia was selected by the federal government to be part of this national forum on prevention of juvenile violence for which Commissioner Ramsey, myself, and Ambrose Commissioner of DHS were appointed by Mayor Nutter to chair. We've concentrated them out in the 22nd District, the Temple area in North Philadelphia, to concentrate to try to extract those individuals that have a potential for creating at-risk and dangerous scenarios, bringing them back home to family court.
Okay. And I guess Judge Docley also, we've had, interacted with the sheriff in voicing concern about that particular, the new building--
Correct.
--the new family court building in terms of safety. In your category in the sheet, you need additional security staff. Is that above and beyond the sheriffs?
Yes. The sheriffs will, the sheriffs are the law enforcement agency for all the FJD, for all courthouses.
Okay.
With 16 floors, now that we're consolidating, I'm not only going to have juveniles in custody, I'm going to have adults in custody. Outside of those adults who commit sex offenses on juveniles, we have the adults who have outstanding warrants in domestic relations and things of that nature. So we're going to have to concentrate sheriffs on transporting those, this large population to and from the building. That still doesn't mean, at this point in time, that I'm sure that we're going to have sheriff presence on the courtroom floor. So I have to have, as I have uniform, non-arm-bearing officers, at least dressed well in a uniform to present and create a semblance of order.
Yeah, and we actually do that here in council now. We have two sheriff's offices. I'm clear we don't have that level of concern, but you know, it feels good to see the sheriffs here and people understand that this is--
They probably came from 18th and Vine.
I'm sorry for taking-- All right. So, okay, but I, specifically, I just want to make sure the 700,000 requests is in addition to--
In addition, and separate apart from the sheriffs.
Okay.
They would argue, they would be family court employees--
Okay. Not sure.
--with the sheriff himself.
Okay. All right, thank you. Can you recognize Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, let me start by saying that when I first came here, you gave me the impression that we got paid by the word, so that's why I asked so many questions. But with the First Judicial District, we were able to ask them a series of questions. We put them in writing and they got back to us. So unfortunately, I'm not going to have as many questions because I got a lot of answers in advance for which I'm truly appreciative of. The first thing that comes to mind to me is that, I think, second to none, and I don't know if my colleagues will agree, that this is probably the best-formatted information by way of digesting a complicated budget I have seen in my six years I've been here. So kudos to that.
Does that get us money?
Not at all.
Not at all.
Not a dime.
Yes.
But what I will say that, that will probably get you money is the fact that you broke down each of your initiatives, each of them, and what it saved the city of Philadelphia, which makes me want to engage my colleagues in saying that when a entity like First Judicial takes the time to take advice from us about savings and how to be a team player like that, that to some degree, that savings and benefit should come back to you to reinforce programs. And I'm going to push that notion among my colleagues to see if we can't come up with some fair kind of process that doesn't just put it back in the general fund. So that's something that I am personally going to work with my colleagues to talk about. And having said all those nice things, I do have a few clarification questions on that I would like to deal with. And so we've been working to deal with some things with you and we are real appreciative of the fact that, and we spoke about witness intimidation, you took it seriously. We worked and put some money in there and we are able to now say that that at least is, is on your radar and our radar collectively. Second thing you did real well was when Councilwoman Lyndell Reynolds Brown introduced a piece on domestic, I mean, human trafficking. That was taken into account by you guys. When we talked about gun cases where the, we felt the bail was too low. You took that seriously and now it's created another problem for the prison commissioner because they're holding them longer because of higher bail. But I think murders are down as a result of that swift action and didn't take a law to do, but it took communication. So we, we appreciate that. In line with that, there's another issue that we'd like you to take into consideration, and that is crimes against our seniors. Particularly, we had a recent hearing on home invasions and a trend of utility workers, impersonators, coming into seniors' homes and robbing them, some violently, in the process of taking jewelry and things like that, and they're preying upon our weak. And we'd like you, we had a hearing about that and like you to take that into account like you took gun cases, like you took witness intimidation and like you've taken human trafficking in your, in your order of things. So that's, that's what I would like you to think about from this body. I wanted to draw questions on the, on the use of some of these savings. How much has technology helped you with the teleconferencing aspect of it? And is there a chance for expansion of that use of technology to continue saving us taxpayers'
The answer is yes, and we actually have a demonstration going on today, April 16th, where we're implementing video that will save transportation costs for incarcerated individuals. The video hookup allows for a two-way response and also allows for confidential communications between counsel and a represented defendant so that those communications can all be interfaced together and save the cost of transporting prisoners. So we're vitally interested in that and pushing forward with that technology, seeking grants to do that. And we'll be here pleading for further funding from counsel, assuredly next year to assist in the funding of that technology.
So currently, you have nine courtrooms? How many courtrooms are--
I think you're correct.
Nine courtrooms?
I think we have nine at this point.
And I would imagine with the new courtroom being built by you, are any of them--
We have--
Yes, speaking to Mike.
Oh, our courtrooms are situated with the technology. The issue becomes one of what can we afford and how many can we afford. I currently have one courtroom in which we have closed-circuit TV where we communicate with our youth that are placed outside of the Philadelphia area so that we don't have to, we can save money so DHS or probation doesn't have to incur the expense or the problem of traveling. problem of traveling during their working hours, so that they can be present for, for interviews and/or court hearings.
We'd like you to keep track of that, because again, in, in light of the fact that we'd like to work with you on diverting some of those savings back, we'd like you to keep track of that, and then us be able to make sure you get that.
Councilman Jones, if I can interrupt for a moment. Court Administrator Evers gives me the actual savings figure, which is $16,000 a day in transportation costs, through the use of this video that we're now testing and hoping to implement in the next month or so. So that's a, an appreciable saving, $16,000 daily.
One or the other, and I will end on this question.
Okay.
I saw your face. But I'm getting paid by the word, so let me get my money.
If you are, sir.
No, I, I missed it.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm like Pavlov's dog in here. When the bell rings, I stop talking, almost.
Almost, right.
On your backlog of cases, that was one of the things we sent you in the letter, and I wanted to get the response to that, on the record, on how you're dealing with it. I understand there are some judges that are being lent to you, I think three, can you speak to that on the record?
On the record, as a result of, as you heard, the heavy numbers, limited resources, and high number of filings, we have experienced a backlog of custody cases. I have, after consultation with my leadership and Judge Murphy, I have procured a, an additional master to hear cases, and through the good graces of Administrative Judge Chair John Herron, Judge Herron has agreed to transfer temporarily three judges from the trial division to assist family division in handling the backlog. As we sit here and speak, our administration is currently going through each and every filing to develop a process that we will hope will mimic the civil days of backlog, and we will be able to utilize it so that we can at least begin to suture this open womb.
I appreciate the ability to send it in writing and get a response, and I thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wait the next round.
Okay, thank you, sir. I, I should add, if, if we were getting paid by the, by the word, I'd be getting a loan from you, sir.
That's right. You're right. No doubt about it.
Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, judges. I concur with Councilman Jones that this is a very effective budget presentation, very digestible. You make the case and everything you're asking for, at the same time, you set the bar kind of high for what's not in here necessarily. And my questions will revolve around some things that are not in here. I'm interested in your staffing levels with regard to probation officers, and a simple question is, do you have enough in general and in a respective courts?
Councilman, I'm not sure I understand the question. You're interested in the staffing levels of?
With regard to probation officers.
Probation officers. Well, we do not have a sufficient number of probation officers. We, we have designated various levels of supervision in the probation department, so that we recognize there's a high risk, a medium risk, and a low risk. For the low-risk offenders, the caseloads are much larger, because we believe that evidence-based practices dictate less involvement as necessary. For the medium risk, obviously, the caseload should be smaller, and for the high risk, much smaller. There are different approaches to addressing those offenders, depending on how they're categorized. What we have done, and what has been recognized nationally, is we've employed behavioral predictors in a statistical fashion that allow us to identify individuals who are more likely to commit serious offenses and more likely to commit a crime while on probation.
Your, your honor, the simple question was, do you have enough?
No.
Okay. Do you want more?
And, simple question is, will you fund more?
Do, do you want more?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know what the impact of having more officers, probation officers, would mean? In other words, have you done the same analysis in terms of reduction of recidivism rate, and what cost savings would be achieved by having more probation officers, similar to the rest of your budget presentation?
We have not, we will do so.
Okay. That's, that's good. Since you don't have enough probation officers, does that create overtime costs?
I truly don't know. I'll have to get you an answer.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And so, you, you begin to discuss this, how many clients do probation officers have on average? And you said there are different levels.
They are. Off the top of my head, I can only tell you that the high-risk caseload should be somewhere in the area below 100, hopefully around 60, but I think they're higher than that. I mean, a best-case scenario, they would be below 60, so that there's more individualized attention possible.
Okay, can you actually forward through the chair what that caseload is, actually is, if it's in different levels of offenses?
I will get you the current figures, yes.
Okay. And just, just last thing, just to make this case on, on this issue, you're going to provide the analysis, which will come along, I guess, with a dollar figure to be invested, but does it cost more money not to have more officers?
I don't want to give you a quick answer. It, it needs to be looked at, and we'll do our best to look at that and get you those answers.
I look forward to reading it. Just another question about the testimony, what specifically would the additional resources, the $138,000 for mental health court, pay for?
Councilman, it would pay for a mental health court information technology individual to help with collecting data, so that we make sure that we're dealing with the evidence-based practices, to know how effective the court is in determining and dealing with mental health behaviors as it relates to criminal justice. It would also fund a motivational interviewer to assist with encouragement. Part of what happens with mental health individuals is that, because sometimes the ability for them to understand, it takes a lot more hands-on dealings with them, and so this individual would be responsible for making sure that they're kept encouraged about the reasons why they need to be in compliance with taking their medications, with staying law-abiding citizen, and with being compliant with supervision generally. It would also fund a treatment coordinator, counselor, someone who would help with providing the, providing and finding the social services that are needed to keep them on track. And it also finally would involve the, I think I just, it's counselor, and, and, I think it's one more, let me think. Make sure I haven't forgotten it. Oh, training, because we have increased our numbers so much, and when we first began, and still now, the majority of our individuals are represented by the Defender Association, but we're now seeing a remarkable increase of the, in the numbers of individuals represented by private counsel. As a result, they are not as knowledgeable, because they don't deal with it as much, so we need to provide more training for them about mental health issues generally, and then about the process of how mental health court works, and how they can engage those, their clients in mental health court as well. And so we would like to do that on a regular basis, but that takes a little more resources and time to do that.
Thank you. Last thing, just interestingly knowing, what percentage of our ex-offender population is impacted by mental health court?
That number keeps changing, because what we find is that there, there has become a more awareness of mental health. There are many people who have suffered from mental health illnesses who were never identified. Now, because individuals know and they're looking for it, we even have police officers who are being trained to look for mental health issues, and I believe at this point, if I'm not mistaken, it's 70, I mean, the numbers are really very high, but I can get you that exact number, Councilman, if you like.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
May I just add, because I don't want the councilmen or people to forget, that family court has juvenile probation officers as well, while adult dominates. Mine still are some of the hardest workings. I have 144 currently, four in the pipeline. I currently have about 3,300 juveniles on probation. When I took over, I had approximately 1,468 kids in placement, I'm down to 983. When I took over back in '05, '06, we, we had somewhere around 140, 150 kids out of Pennsylvania. I have none now. That's as a result of the probation staff in and of itself, as well as our diversion. Also, my probation officers, on their own time, have scheduled basketball games with our probationers, take part in extracurricular activities and sport activities with a program I created in court. So when you ask, how do I quantify that, I would need to know what you mean by the milestones. You give me more probation officers, I reduce juvenile crime, I make better kids, and I make the world a better place. So it all starts with you saying, give us the monies to put in my class 100 for our, for our probation officers.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. I want to be clear, I was actually the next one online, so I'm not jumping in front of everybody, okay? Wait a minute, Ms. Lewis can verify, wait a minute now. Yeah, discretion to the chair, right. But I'll be very brief, because actually, I was going to ask very similar questions to Councilman Good about probation. I, I guess the one thing I would add, I know in past years, it's been stated that one of the problems with, particularly the pay for the probation officer, is that you lose them to surrounding counties. Does that still seem to be a, a problem?
We don't know, actually. The interest arbitration that the city lost several years ago, in which I mentioned to you, the city shorted us 300,000 to cover their first year, the whole concept there was to raise the level of pay for senior probation officers, because there was a significant loss of trained personnel to the federal system and to the outlying counties where the pay was considerably better. We hope that the interest arbitration has now introduced parity of salaries, but we've yet to see an experience. The interest arbitration that we agreed to fund the first year for started only in the month of February this year. So that's, was back pay, and forward pay will add significant money to the senior probation officer pay. We'll have to see what happens.
Have to see, okay. And it will be interesting to see what the study that Councilman Good references, as the effect of, say, on recidivism, not having, you know, the over caseload of probation officers could be.
Well, it's an excellent question, and it, if we can get an answer to it, it's, it's an important one.
Just one other quick question. Tangled title court, is that still in existence, or where?
Yes.
Okay. And how, is it, still seems to be having a, a pretty positive effect, or?
Yes. Very few people know about tangled title court, so I happen to be involved in that.
Okay. Still Judge Rizzo, is that?
Well, no, she's, she's doing the mortgage foreclosure process, but there are volunteers who handle the tangled titles, and there's funding available for the advertising that's necessary, and I rule on petitions that allow for the forgiveness of some of the publication costs, which are prohibitive, and then draw excess money out of that funding that's made available. But it is still, still viable and still very operational.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, let me compliment the folks that are sitting at, at the table here. I think, I've been around quite some time, and I think this is the best leadership, or some of the best leadership we've ever had in the court, and I really congratulate you for, and when I look at all these various special courts, it shows me that there's innovation and interest and paying attention to the specific problems that affect us from time to time, and then addressing the issue. And I do compliment you also on your, on your format, I think it's, it's a tremendous way of understanding it. So, correct me if I'm wrong, the First Judicial District saved the city 19.4 million?
Correct.
In what period of time?
That's on an annual basis.
Well, this is, this is last year's savings.
Right.
Okay. And I, I see you sitting up here asking for 1.1, 700,000, 38,000, 42,000. To me, it seems pretty clear that the money is there to fund the request that you're asking for, without impacting the city general fund at all. We are still turning more money back than you're asking for in supplemental changes in the budget that's being presented. Is that a, is that a fair assessment?
That's our case.
Is that your case?
That's our position.
I, I, I don't, I don't, I really don't understand the motivation for any department heads or administrators to do innovative things to save money, when the money goes directly to the general fund with no percentage held to reward them for doing the things we've asked them to do and saving money. It's almost like you're saving money, but you hurt yourself. So, if, if, for example, the city, the department, or court, or whatever department involved, were able to keep, recoup 20% of the savings in a fiscal year, that seems to be, to be a kind of a fair 20, 25%, would be $4 million plus, that you could implement additional programs to save us additional money. So to me, that, this is kind of a no-brainer hearing, in that we should be supporting the request that you made, because you've shown that what you've done is successful, and have been able to respond to all the individual needs of council members and others. To me, I, I, I would, I would argue that we should fund what you're asking for.
Thank you.
Secondly, going back to the probation issue, just for a second, and I'm glad Councilman Good raised it, and Councilman Greenlee also went, went along and asked some additional questions. Isn't it a public safety issue? I mean, it, it's an administrative court issue, because there's cost involved, but for every, for every caseload we reduce, aren't we making our neighborhoods safer, and our prisons less full, and our police less busy? I mean, it seems to me that that's kind of the, the touch point, where if we fund it properly, and we have the right level of caseload, we actually make everyone safer and spend less money on other ends of the criminal justice system. Is that too simplistic?
No, not at all. That's exactly the dynamic.
What is the best, in your, your view, the best similarly sized judicial district in the country, whether it's a county, state, or it's county or city, that does it right when it comes to probation? And I'm not saying we don't do it right, we probably don't staff it right, but who does it right, both staffing, who would be the, who would be like the paradigm probation, probation departments or judicial districts? Because I like the, I like the miracle.
Councilman Kenny, I, I don't know the answer to that. I think there's a paradigm out there where you're looking at a, a lot of variables in terms of the community, it's the, the type of urban population that you're talking about.
I mean, the Cook, the Cook counties, the New York cities, the Boston's, I mean, the similarly situated cities.
They talk about Florida, and they talk about Oklahoma, and there's a vast disparity between Oklahoma, Philadelphia, and Florida. So it changes, it, it, you know, it's a moving topic.
But I mean, if, if your folks, and, you know, your people do the research and could come up with some parallel that we could try to follow, and again, this is not in any way criticizing your, what you're doing now, because you're doing it with, with what you have given to you. I, I don't see any reason why anything, anything less than what you're asking for should be put back in the general fund, where it goes into this kind of a, a dis, that sometimes we don't even know what they're doing with it. At least with this particular situation, we know what you've done with it, we know what you're requesting to do with it, and it's been successful, so like, why are we like, why wouldn't we even hesitate?
We hope to have your support. That's exactly what we want.
I clearly, you have mine, but I would also like to know what we need in the way of both juvenile and adult probation, because, because I think if we can keep folks from going back into the system and become, as they say, fountains that the drains, paying us taxes as opposed to sucking taxes up, we're all better off for it, we're all safer for it. So, I mean, I, I would, I would put my vote up for your request today, if, if, if I could, and would continue to talk to the council president, who was always open-minded about these kind of things, especially when, when programs work. So, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Councilman, you mean juvenile probation as well, correct?
I said juvenile.
You said adult.
I said ju, I said juvenile and adult.
I apologize.
I did, I swear.
Okay. Just checking.
You think you're sitting this close to me, I wouldn't say juvenile first? I said juvenile first. No, check the record. I said, I always said.
Have to protect my guys.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair Recognize, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning, Councilwoman.
As a former teacher, I would be remiss not to echo what my colleagues have already said, this is actually outstanding, in terms of simplifying and what I call making a dummy proof, a very complex system in a way that we can understand. So I commend you for, for the presentation. It is the best I've seen since I've been here. So I commend you for that. Councilman Jones and Councilman Kenny have already, I believe eloquently summarized why it makes sense to entertain your request favorably, particularly as it relates to probation officers, and one thing we care about around here is making sure that departments look like Philadelphia. So what I need to hear is, is the composition breakdown of probation. So what I need to hear is the composition breakdown of probation officers on both sides of the ledger, by gender and ethnicity. If you don't have that today, then you can forward it to the Chair.
Well, I think we have the overall demographics.
In your testimony?
In our testimony.
Attached at the last page.
At the end, but it's, we'll give you what you've asked for in terms of the probation department, but staff demographics, we always provide you, and that's the last page.
Okay, this is staff across the big picture.
That's correct.
Right.
Okay. So specific with probation officers would be helpful.
All right.
Discussion is given to Project START, looking at the prevention side of the continuum for young people. So if you could elaborate on the impact of Project START and the interface with the school district?
Fair enough. Project START is my truancy program. It started initially in 1998 when Judge Paul Penapinto was the administrative judge. I had the good fortune of being one of the original three truancy masters. In my area was the Kensington Cluster. What we did, over the course of time, as well as under my leadership, we sat down with the Department of Human Services, as well as the school district, and we revamped it over and over again. Currently, the processes I have currently running four cluster courts throughout the city of Philadelphia, geographically located. The first contact will be a DHS representative, we call that person a facilitator. They collect all the biographical, social history of the families, and try to get down to the root cause of what's causing the truancy. We then connect those families to community-based services. Thereafter, approximately, I believe it's 120 days of continuation of coming back to court several times, usually three, it will then go to a per diem master that has been retained by me to look and try to form more of a bite, or find out if the family's complying or not complying, and what are the real issues. Ultimately, what the final decision will be, will the matter as a truant penetrate our system further as a dependent? Most people don't understand that the Philadelphia School Code creates truancy as a quasi-criminal, in which incarceration and/or fines to child and/or parent can take place. I don't follow that model. I've treated this as a prevention, as a precursor to dependency. Under our Statute 6302, subsection five, dependency is defined as habitual truancy or truancy without justification. Under the law, three days, you're considered truant. The standard here is 10 days, but the reality is, that's when petitions are filed. So we have to lean on the school district. I am confident that we have good leadership, but I am a known critic of the Philadelphia School District. As I often say, we get a free education. I question about the appropriateness. I've shared that with the last four superintendents that I've worked with. I have great faith in this superintendent and his number-one assistant, Karen Lynch. They work hand and glove with us. They now have elevated an attorney, Rachel Holtzman, to a position of prominence that she's working with us. So we really are working. My concept is, let's find out what the problem is. Is it a parent?
Yes.
When you scratch the basis of a truant child, there's really some social issue or poverty issue going on.
Attached to it.
So if we have to feed their belly, let's feed their belly. If we had to get mom, I have to believe it is. I don't have the numbers with me, I actually left it, I think we did, I have to pull my file. I could give you the numbers of how many truancy cases I processed this year.
Because ultimately, the goal is about impact and...
And penetration.
Yes.
We want to keep them out.
So where's the connect with the district attorney's office? And the only reason why I raise the question, and a separate offline conversation with him, who also cares about prevention.
Absolutely.
Philosophically, he's of the same mindset. Let's not treat it as a potential criminal justification, but what can we do better?
I've met with the district attorney, Seth Williams, and Dr. Carrera from his office, who handles the truancy. We have been working arduously trying to develop a process that is forthright legal and doesn't create the threat of incarceration or prison. I have no intention of ever creating debtors' prison for poor people, because they can't pay fines when they can't send their kids to school. So we're working.
The dollar figure specifically for Project START? Could you forward it to the Chair?
I could get that information, I'm not prepared with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Sure.
Councilman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I would like to applaud...
$1.2 million from DHS to run it.
The entire judiciary for doing the important work, the things that are complicated and make our heads hurt. And I think that's underappreciated fundamentally, because always, when somebody goes to court, someone is not happy with the outcome. But I would like to first recognize Judge Woodskipper, and thank you, Your Honor, for your support and participation and the dedication of our ceremonial courtroom in the personage of Justice James Thomas McDermott. And I'd also like to tell you that I do support your request for a court information officer, and applaud you as you articulated the history of the mental health court and the wonderful work that's been done there. That is one of the things that makes your head hurt, and is very complicated, and I wish you continued success on that.
And I thank you, Councilman. Thank you for your support.
And then I would move on to Judge Doherty, and just, again, state as I have in the past, that you've taken family court from the doghouse to the penthouse. And again, there's hard work and dedication that goes into that. Your inclusive demeanor in bringing in Health and Human Services with Anne Marie Ambrose and the school district, and having those wonderfully inclusive conversations. And recently, I applaud you and your staff for the project involving intellectual disabilities and autism. And that is a difficult world, but you're jumping in with both feet to create a response that recognizes that they have different behaviors. And I would remind everyone that there's 2,000 individuals living with autism that have touched the criminal justice system in the last year. So I applaud you for your work.
Thank you. I could share with you, part of our concern is we can't document or gather the numbers of juveniles who have been placed as a result of behavioral issues, when in fact, they've been wrongfully diagnosed, and they probably are on the autistic spectrum. And as you know, we've met and worked with you, so if there's any way that we can keep our kids from penetrating as a result of factors that they're not contributing to, then we accept and thank you for your continued support and networking.
We're looking forward to continuing that dialogue. And finally, Judge Harin, we're sad to hear that you are retiring. I'm not going to get into a dialogue with Judge O'Keefe as to who's older. You both look good at this point in your careers. But I would acknowledge that what I don't know about indigent defense enlightens me as to the challenge in building that system. And currently, the administration has withdrawn their request for proposal. And I'd love to have you and Judge Lerner champion this cause going forward with your considerable expertise. But I'm going to, because I know I'm under the wire, I'm going to throw two questions in here. One, I very much like to know, I believe that we have to have a study to look at what the problems are inherent in the indigent council system, so that we can build a strong model going forward. And I'd like to know if you have thoughts on what those principles should look like, if you're allowed to comment on that. And second, I do believe that the issue of jury summons and the challenge that presents to the integrity of our judicial system and our commitment to fairness and justice is fundamental in people serving on jury duty. And I don't know if you have strategies where we can use public service announcements, if you have thoughts on how to educate the public, how we can join the chambers of commerce and businesspeople and citizens alike, because one juror can make a difference in the hope and the quest for justice in the system. So I would like, I believe that that is often talked about, but I believe we need a comprehensive strategy. Everyone has a responsibility. And I know that over the years, we all have hard luck stories where people say, "I can't serve, I'm running my own business," or "I can't serve, my son is sick." But fundamentally, you have to find a way to be there. And if one day, one trial is the cost of preserving that fairness in the city of Philadelphia, it's well worth it. So thank you.
Well, there are two questions. The answer to the first is, do we have a comprehensive strategy? Well, we have a strategy, I'm not so sure it's comprehensive. We will have a jury appreciation month in May. Judge Woodskipper and other judges of our court will express their appreciation early May, and then in late May, I will preside over a Soffler Court, where we've started with a carrot, and then we'll go with a stick. And I did this in the 1990s, and unfortunately, found a number of individuals willfully failing to respond to jury summons over and over and over again. We are actually receiving jury summons back from individuals with a very impolite expression on the summons face itself. And one of those words begins with, "Well, you can go, and I'll let you fill it in." But not only do we get no response, but we get a horrendous response, showing that the acceptance of jury duty is just, isn't recognized. So we're going to have to use a stick, unfortunately. It's the last thing we want to do. We hope that that's going to turn things around, because victim-witness intimidation is an extraordinary concern. Council members have been in the forefront of attempting to address those issues, and we're doing that through this indicting grand jury. And the requirement for good jurors and additional jurors to staff those indicting grand juries is crucial to the effort to address witness intimidation. And we're making, I trust, some progress in that area. But as the juror response falls off to what we now see 13 out of 100 reporting for jury service, we have a crisis. And our entire system, whether it's civil or criminal, depends on those jurors coming in and honoring the call. The other question was...
Indigent counsel.
Indigent counsel. I'm, Judge Lerner is far older than I, and far wiser.
I think...
Yeah.
We can check the record for that as well.
I would never say that in his presence. As a court, we've taken the position that we cannot be the payer. In the past, the city has provided funding, but never enough funding. And so what I said at the outset was, we were shorted by the city administration. They gave us 8.5, they took back the 8.5 because we refused to accept it, and they took back an additional $300,000 because that was the true cost in prior years over the underfunding. So we lost that $300,000. We lost the $300,000 for the additional parity pay for probation officers. So we recognize that we have lost and lost and lost. We're looking to you, hopefully, to fund that. We've taken the position that we do not, that we appoint counsel. And we appoint counsel paying attention to the obligation to appoint qualified counsel. And that is the duty of the court and the only duty of the court in that area. The constitutional responsibility for paying for competent and qualified counsel rests with the governmental entity, in this case, the city. So there may be other delivery systems, but right now, what you have is a system that works. The question is really a matter of dollars and cents. Can you pay for more? Do you wish to pay for more? If you fund more, will you get more for those dollars? That's in your hands, not ours. We are not able to give you any wisdom or any guidance, that's your call.
I understand. And in response to that, I do believe that the Public Defenders Act provides that the court appoint and the city pay. I believe the Commonwealth should pay, we're the only state that that does not happen. But the second piece, I think, is even more important in making sure that the constitutional and civil rights of the indigent are protected, and that is, if we have numerous wheels, for instance, capital cases and homicide cases and family court, both for dependency and indigent, but the quality of those individuals that would approach those wheels has to be of the highest caliber. And it's almost akin to the training that goes on in the DA's office, you start out in municipal court on misdemeanors, and then you grow in level and prove your expertise. But I also believe that as we move forward, we have to make sure that even those that are qualified at the highest level, that their competency is reviewed at least every three years. So if you have any thoughts on that formally or informally, as we move through this difficult process, the only thing I believe the council is interested in is making sure that the constitutional rights and the civil rights are preserved. And that should not have a dollar amount attached to it.
Well, as you know, the Ministry of Governing Board raised the fee for capital case representation from a very abysmal $2,500 to $10,000. So it was a huge, significant increase, and that resulted in expanding the list of council willing to take these appointments significantly. And that's $10,000, irrespective of whether the matter results in a plea or not. So we probably, through you, ought to be addressing the guaranteed fee system schedule, the modified guaranteed fee system schedule, which has been under attack and criticized for years and years and years. But that question really rests with you. It's a funding issue, fundamentally a funding issue, and it rests with the city. And I know that you have significant pressures in schools, all the departments and the divisions, and the court itself, asking for funding. So I don't have any wisdom, I'm sure Ben Lerner does, and I'm sure you can tap that as you do, Edward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. I thank everyone for being here today, as well as echoing the sentiments of my colleagues on this thorough presentation provided to all of us. Just a couple of questions regarding the Juvenile Drug Treatment Court. Judge Doherty, can you give us an overview, percentage-wise, of the population of juveniles that come through family court that utilizes this particular treatment program?
The number of cases? Give me one second.
Just the percentage.
I don't know, I'd have to look at my paperwork. Give me one second. I have to get back to you on that one, Councilman. I only have that... I don't have those numbers. I thought I did, I just have an outline of what it was.
Okay. I just want to get an overview of...
Well, I could tell you the overview. The overview is, for those individuals that have been accused of a felony, we put them through voluntarily, they come in, through the district attorney's office and a public defender, they go through a list, they enter in admission, which would arguably be a plea of guilt, except there's no finding of adjudication, and that's what separates my system from adult. They then go through three phases through the system, and hopefully, the intent and purpose is that they'll graduate through the process. If they graduate through the process, then we will expunge the arrest, and they will not have a record. But more so, we're able to get community-based services and treatment for them. We selected certain felonies, usually the nonviolent offenses and some drug offenses, because the majority of what we're finding out is, many of the people who are selling are in fact using. We have changed the process, we've increased more numbers into it, we are celebrating greater graduation rates, but for the exact number, I don't have them with me, unfortunately.
When you get a chance, if you just could provide that, because what we're doing, in terms of my staff is doing, an overview of the level of juveniles who are engaging in, one, DNA abuses, drug and alcohol, and if they're coming through the system, what type of treatment they're actually receiving. And then the other component is the juvenile mental health component. And I know you have a strategy where you're working with the Department of Human Services to...
Correct.
So if you can collaborate on that particular program, with the Department of Human Services... So if you can collaborate on that particular program with the Department of Human Services. And the last one is your strategy in dealing with juvenile recidivism. The juvenile recidivism rate when a young person goes to...we often talk about the recidivism rate amongst adults, but it's been my history and my experience as a young guy growing up in South Philadelphia where most of my friends who became career criminals or lifelong members of the system start off from going to Glenn Mills, going to Caldwell Heights. But that transition from coming back into society in terms of going into the school system is usually where there's the disconnect. So give us an overview of your strategy that you have been working with.
Okay. Let me at least maybe clarify, or maybe I misunderstood. My juvenile treatment court isn't just for everyone who has a juvenile addiction. It's a particularly diversionary program. We have a plethora of services and plethora of providers that deal with substance abuse. Matter of fact, I just engaged a provider who will now open up a outpatient treatment at 20th and Hamilton around a corner from my courthouse, which is going to be perfect. So we treat everybody on an individual basis. As administrative judge, I invited, as you know, Department of Human Services in my building, Community Behavioral Health, the managed healthcare company for Philadelphia is in my courthouse, as well as any other necessary provider. So we have currently CBH workers in each individual courtroom, which will have a history of the mental health history of the child and or family. Then we'll have DHS social workers, and then we have all these necessary evaluators. What our process is that we've got to take a holistic approach. If you're coming in on a delinquent offense, just because you committed a car theft doesn't necessarily mean we can't get you some treatment or make sure... But we have to walk a fine line because you don't want to diagnose every juvenile with an access one diagnosis, which is down the line going to hurt them.
So when you get caught with narcotics, right? And I guess that on the district attorney's side, that will determine how...
Yes, we have...as I get...you could get arrested and then the DA will make a decision as to...the DA will make a determination as to filing a charge. We have that opportunity when you come into our youth study center. Probation has the authority and power to adjust that intake, which means we're not going to begin the prosecution. And we create some community-based service and we monitor that. If the process comes in, the petition will go. The district attorney can also take that and put it through their youth advisory panel, YAP. When they come into our court, they could either admit, be found guilty, and we usually divert them, particularly if it's a first offense or low amount of marijuana or any other substance, depending. Then...but at the end of the day, we are going to the base core providers and services with going through a central evaluating unit. I currently have in my courthouse a urinalysis machine so that everybody through 18th and Vine and or 34 South 11th Street will have a urine test and we get the results then. And the question is, many times I'll ask the kid, "Are you high?" And he'll deny it. And I'll say, "I could tell whether it went through your nose, your mouth, or through your skin. I'm sending you up to pee in a cup." And they'll come back and they fess up. But the reality is, they have to fess up because then they have the leverage that they...since they're not telling the truth and it's not part of rehabilitation, they may have to be detained. But the majority of them really admit, and then we get them into community-based services.
That's where I'm going.
Right. Now, look, we don't want to lock them up. You know, it's...do I accept repeated drug use? No. Do...is it a fact that a part of urban life and youth is impulsive activity and you may decide to smoke a blunt? Well, I'm going to catch you smoking that blunt. And the issue is, what's the real problem? Why are you smoking the blunt? Some of it is just because it's part of the, you know, the part of being street credibility. Some of it is people trying to handle their family issues. So we have to look at it. I can't say from a blanket of view. It's a case-by-case basis, but I have a plethora of services. I guess that's the best way to describe it. But I don't want you to think everybody who has a drug issue goes through drug treatment court. My treatment court's a specified unit. However, the same types of services that are available to JTC, we call it, kids, are available to any other child that walks through my door. It has to be equal access to justice.
If you could just help us out with those numbers, that'd help me out on the project that we're working on. And just the last...the second part of the question is, the returning juveniles back into the Philadelphia school district?
Correct.
What their actual process looks like?
The actual process. If we placed a child, we've now worked hand-in-glove with DHS Commissioner Ambrose. We now have programs, what we call reintegration services. Probation, as well as the provider caseworker or social worker, will work with our probation while the child's in placement. The purpose of placement's not punitive. That word doesn't exist in our...what it is, it's treatment. But we also have to have the accountability and the development of competences. So what we're trying to do is while the kid's in placement, we are simultaneously working and getting involved in the family so that we, when that child reintegrates back into the community, but more so back into their home, that we're trying to alleviate some of the circumstances or conditions which cause the youth to run to the street as opposed to run to his home. Then after...we have to have a discharge plan now. It's required. No judge will discharge only unless you hand us a plan telling us what the future for that youth is. Then we have caseworkers for approximately 90 days, six months. I think we just moved it up to where an additional worker on top of probation will follow the family and the youth so that we can reintegrate into society and make them get into a school. The problem is Harrisburg years ago passed legislation called Act 88 that said if you're placed for certain delinquent offenses, only if your children are the city of the first class, which is ours only, they're excluded from a free and appropriate education for 180 days. But that 180 days exacerbated into an educational career. We've worked against it and I developed a whole other process called crossover court because that was only on delinquent youth. So I can also place a child to get the same type of treatment and services through the dependency system by saving that child from a prior record score and all the necessary issues or tags to go with it. We've worked that. I developed that in 2003, and now I have it running four days a week with another judge. So again, there's a lot of services. Most people don't understand what we do. They just want to look at the bad side, but we do a lot of good.
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Chair, and good morning and good afternoon, administrative and president judges. Thank you for coming here. You know what I love about this process is, you know, you really get to understand how programs work, how the city operates, and how we either work together or we need to improve some of our efficiencies. And what I've admired and respected the most about the court system is you adjust, adapt your technology in some of the data requests that I have when you're meeting with each and one of...each one of you at separate occasions. It's amazing. I mean, I think we as a city, you know, I used to always say that our public property and some of the other departments, and I say public property, not because I'm picking on public property, but because I am the chair of public property. And I like to say, some of our departments still have hanging chats, right? When it comes to our data records and key...and we are constantly improving on that. And it does rely on more monies and priorities. And the court system is a priority for the city of Philadelphia. And your...the ability that you've shown year in and year out, especially here today with these graphs and charts, you know, quantifying the savings and quantifying the programs that you put on, on the rate of returns, is to be mirrored, I think. You know, Councilman Kenny was talking about, you know, if you can point to any other county or municipality in the country, I think they should be looking at us on how to operate efficiently. I mean, you have a new court administrator. You're always changing things. Officer judicial records, I think, is exciting. So you're constantly changing processes for the benefit of Philadelphians and what we're trying to protect. I just have a few quick questions. We talked about probation. I also echo my colleagues, you know, more probation officers, you know, the better. Our children and adults are being kept safe and reengaged and productive members of society. Delinquencies. I've had several conversations with you about delinquencies from the court's perspective. We have different forms of delinquencies, and we have, if I can speak first, to municipal court. Could you explain that the court's ability to accept or to receive some of the delinquencies that the city brings in, whether it's municipal delinquencies, whether it's foreclosures, whether it's, you know, private? I mean, I believe you have certain days allocated, if I recall, for delinquencies to recoup some of our, you know, I'm going to say, you know, far past taxes that are due.
We do have any...we have several days that are allocated towards the delinquencies. The issue with municipal court is we do not have equity jurisdiction. So if you're actually looking to us to recoup, I will have to punt to my friends in Common Police Court. What we have the ability to do is judicially enter a judgment and a finding that the monies are due. When it comes to collection, that would be outside the scope of what we do in municipal court.
Okay. You know, I think the Judge Hearn has stated, when you talk about sequestration and sheriff sales, I mean, that's property rights and nobody wants their property taken. So I'm glad that the attempt at a new tools that we...well, they may not be new tools, but some of the tools that are...that we're using again, or some of the tools that have been refined, are actually working. You know, so my question is, you know, and we could talk offline, is I believe, even though you don't have the authority for collections in AMC if it goes to CP, I'm interested to hear from CP, but is the city...are we bringing cases to you? I know you are adequately prepared and ready for several days a week, but are we fulfilling some of our responsibility? Are we taking enough cases through the process? Because I, like I said, whether it's your municipal tax, delinquencies, or real estate, which is different, I think people, when they get a court notice, you know, they usually want to comply.
Well, Councilman, the sequestration program I described is a very special, innovative program that the city conceived and asked the court for its assistance in implementing, and we did. I do not know, or do any of us, what the true uncollected amount is in city taxes, whether it's school income tax, real estate tax, residential real estate tax, or commercial real estate tax, whatever the amount of that delinquency is, obviously, it harms the city. And the question is, is the city administration doing enough to bring those matters to court? All I can say is, if they bring it to court, we create the programs and we think we efficiently and fairly administer those programs, and then the result is a judgment or a settlement. And in the sequestration program, the interesting thing is, although I have hearings scheduled every single Monday, nobody has shown up for a hearing. They've all settled. So the leverage of the program itself yields the funding on the delinquencies. And you have $4 million and you'll have $8 million that you didn't have in the beginning of the year by the end of the year. So you'll have to talk to the city administration in terms of, are they doing enough to bring these delinquencies to court?
And I fully understand it. The same thing with sheriff sales and, like you said, with sequestration. I fully understand it. So my question...all right, let me pose it this way. My question to you all, you are able and ready and capable of hearing cases and delinquencies in any forms or fashion. You know, if the city, or when the city, or if we're up the capacity or if we fall short, you're ready to address those?
Absolutely. We will never say no.
Great. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your honors, I know you're aware of the fact that I have a bill pending to try to end custodial arrests of persons possessing small amounts of marijuana relative to the demographic, total demographic skewed numbers relative to who gets arrested and who doesn't. And I don't want to go through that all now. And I want to thank Judge Woodskipper for allowing me to go to the CJAB and attend there and give a presentation and have interaction. So I do appreciate that, and I appreciate the work you're doing to try to make this happen administratively. I just have a couple issues that kind of are two different kinds of approaches. One is, I received a letter on March 21st signed by...sorry. Signed by you, Judge Woodskipper, and by Everett Gillison. And I want to quote one of the paragraphs. It says, "The purpose cited for the introduction of this legislation was to remove the administrative burdens on law enforcement. While all the CJAB members believe that this is a worthwhile purpose, we believe that operationally this legislation will not have the desired impact." Quote, "The members believe that the processing time will likely increase. Officers will still be required to leave the street to complete all arrest paperwork, seize and place evidence on a property receipt, and transport the evidence to be analyzed by the police department's forensic bureau." In your...Judge, in your testimony, in your testimony provided by us, it says that the success of the small amount of marijuana program, which allowed for 3,332 cases from formal prosecution in 2013, and according to your testimony, resulted in a savings of $171,000 in police overtime and laboratory fees. Can anyone explain where this number comes from? Because my discussions with and from the quote from the letter from CJAB, it says that they still need to property tag and analyze marijuana confiscated as part of the mandatory arrest. So on one hand, I have CJAB Deputy Mayor Gillison saying that we have these costs relative to processing and analyzing. And Judge, your testimony indicates that we have the savings because we don't tag and analyze anymore. So I just kind of need to get that resolved.
Councilman, I'm going to permit Judge Nifield to respond to that question and just thank you for the opportunity to work with you and your staff to address some of the issues that we've raised.
Thank you, Judge.
Councilman, I believe that those numbers were calculated based on the fact that the officers were not needed to appear in court. And it was based on the average number of hours that the police officers tend to...it's calculated to spend on each court proceeding and that the cases typically have two listings before the cases are resolved. And it was that time of the police officers having to appear in court that was used for the calculation. And obviously, as already indicated, that all of the drugs that are seized as a result of those arrests are not analyzed by the community.
So I guess the question is, the evident property tag and analyzation of the marijuana is not being done or is being done?
Well, it is being tagged and it is being transported. It is being retained, but the lab technicians are not having to do any of the analysis on any of those items.
And these are for phone services?
Unless and until...I'm sorry, unless the person decides to go to trial on the offense, in which case the analyses will be done.
But I assume that this testimony dealt with the SAM program where the diversion took place, so there was no need to tag or to analyze because they weren't going to trial anyway?
When somebody's diverted to SAM, there's actually no guarantee that they are going to accept these SAM offers. It's not anything that we force anybody to do unless they're interested in it, nor do we know that we actually have a high percentage of people who are diverted to the SAM program who do not successfully complete the program. Those cases eventually end up being listed in a trial room. And if they are going to proceed to trial, then the analysis would need to be completed.
Okay. And on the other issue that's just recently arisen is relative to the PAR system and the compatibility of our ability to deal with PARs as opposed to issuing a summary arrest. And we're being told that one of the final logistical hurdles in enabling Philadelphia police to issue summons on the street is the PAR system. Pittsburgh, I understand, basically copied our PAR system and took it and utilized it. And they have seemed to have been able to deal with the PARs issue and still issue a summons. Does anyone know how they could use our system and we're hampered by issuing a summons because of PARs, but they're not?
Well, I think that the issue goes well beyond PARs. And the issue that we were trying to avoid with PARs is PARs is a sophisticated electronic processing system. And the issuing of the citation on the street would then require somebody to then enter the data subsequently. And we were...the thought was that we were moving backwards in terms of technology and we're taking an electronic filing system and we're overriding it with a paper system that then needs to require the data entry.
But we still have no idea... But we still have no idea at this point how Pittsburgh does it and deals with PARs, and we can't do it dealing with PARs. If we don't know, we don't know. I just...
I think it's a fair issue that we don't know. I know that we, I think several of us were reaching out to Pittsburgh. The individuals from Pittsburgh and the pretrial unit actually were in Philadelphia several weeks ago, and we've reached out to them in an attempt to secure certain data that they have.
And do you think that that will result in an amount of dollars necessary to reprogram our PAR system to enable us to issue a citation as opposed to summary arrest? As opposed to custodial arrest? Are we asking for numbers too in addition to the technology, or how much it would cost to do that? Because the people at OIT here in Philly say that that's a doable process, that we could reprogram PARs to allow for this to happen without very little trouble.
Well, counsel, that issue was really just one of the major concerns, and it didn't deal with the identification of the individuals on the street, which we had the concern for police safety. And as I'm sure you know, the police commissioner, as well as two of his deputies, you know, were at a meeting where we're all trying to see what we can do to work through
And two things.
All of the concerns.
One of the things that happened recently before we, when the bill was held, we amended the bill to require a custodial arrest in the event that the individual cannot provide adequate ID, and the police can then take them into custody. I mean, the other issue too is that the city is totally lagged behind any police technology efforts in having people being able to be fingerprint identified in a police vehicle at the scene, which most major police departments do. And that's not the court's issue, that's the administration's issue and police modernization. Because a lot of that stuff could be, in many instances, could be avoided, not only in marijuana arrests, but in all kinds of retail theft and other things, where the person could be identified in a supervisor's car by putting their handprint on a computer screen. So we haven't pursued those things. I don't know why. Obviously, they're probably going to say it's cost, but it's not the court's problem. But a lot of these things could keep police on the street by just simply having the right technology. But you guys are still working on trying to get us out of the dark ages of 83% demographically challenged marijuana arrests.
What we're trying to do is get you the data that you asked for and to share with you the concerns that we collectively have.
Okay. And again, I do appreciate your desire to work with us to get this done, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Joe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Always I like to compliment before I critique. I want to thank you for the special course that you did for the bike race in the Fourth Councilmatic District. It keeps it a family event by not allowing people who are overzealous, who drink too much, to disrupt things, and it sends a great signal for our community that it's a family-oriented event. So thank you for consistently providing that resource of, I don't want to call it a drunk court, but a quality of life court, I'll call it. So thank you very much for that. This question more comes from individuals that I've met in the returning offender community that have previously been incarcerated. And this is about collateral consequences. And I really don't want to do this here and now, but I want to, on the record, cite the fact that many times defendants who are pleading guilty of misdemeanors, felonies, or other kinds of offenses and taking a deal don't often understand the collateral consequences of that admission. And what often happens is the things that they give up, you know, for life, things like the right to do government loans, loss of the ability to live in public housing at times, other things that affect them throughout their life, they aren't totally cognizant of the impact of. And what I'd like to see is some type of compromise where people acknowledge that they know about it, and that they, you know, and I don't think that's the burden of the court. I was given wise counsel by, you know, my colleagues in CJAB, that that may cost some time. But I think, when you think about a young person's life and what they're going to give up in this, they should be darn well sure about what they're doing. And I would like to work with you guys on that issue too, so that people are more conscious of what the rights of a conviction actually mean. Is that, you could just answer that with a nod of the head or on the record?
That's not a simple nod. That's a, it's, believe me, it's not a matter of time. The guilty plea colloquies administered by the judges in a conscientious and diligent fashion with absolute fidelity to the requirements of case law developed both in Pennsylvania and federally. To go at your question is really, can we anticipate everything that that individual may want to engage in in their future life experience? A federal loan or some other type of right that we all enjoy? And can we anticipate that that exercise in the future warrants a warning today that those privileges and rights we all enjoy may be affected in year five, year 10, year 30 of your life? The answer obviously is, we cannot do so.
I don't mean it in the strictest sense, Your Honor. I mean it in a general sense that acknowledges in a form or in a signing, and I also understand they can say, I didn't know what I was signing. But that kind of top 10 things that you lose, not everything in infinitum that you could lose, but the top things that we all know they will run into. I think, I just would like to work with you to talk about how we do that in an effective manner that doesn't slow down the process too much.
We're willing to have a conversation, but at the end of the day, we're court leadership. We do not have the right to dictate to individual judges how they exercise their judicial duty and responsibility.
The word dictate, I'm not using. The word negotiate is the one I'm using.
Well, I don't have the, I don't even have the authority to negotiate with judges. They are independently elected individuals who are responsible to obey the law and to apply it evenly and dispassionately. The conversation with you is always a wonderful experience. However...
I've never heard it quite couched like that, but I'll take it.
Well, we're here, we're here in public.
However, and nevertheless, right?
Nevertheless, we'll talk.
All right. I appreciate that conversation, because a lot of young people who have now returned back didn't realize, or should have realized better, what their life would be like afterwards. And if we can do that a little more on the front end, I think that'll go a long way. The second issue I have, and these are difficult public policy issues that need to be talked about, and that's why I'm bringing it up, Recommendation 75, which is one that deals with the...
Closing out support orders.
Correct. Yeah, speaking of Mike, there.
Closing out support orders, yes.
Right. It's one that I've raised before, and I continue to be concerned about. On one hand, it allows for the removal of backlogs and to focus on collectible receivables for people seeking support payments. I get that part. On the back end, I've had more than one, and I'm moving towards a dozen or so individuals that in the course of a constituent service piece said that my spouse has been derelict in their duty to support this child, and therefore, I'm getting kicked out of my house, or therefore, I can't afford to go and send this child to college. And as a man who predominantly are impacted by this, I understand also that we are putting some people in jail often because of that. And I know it's a delicate balance, but I would like to talk about this in a way, because as we then see in my district, the impact of a single parent who has to choose between heating their home or eating that week because someone else didn't do their part of the parental responsibility, and, you know, more and more in my district, we have single-parent head of households. And more and more in my district, that impact is felt economically. So we need to figure out where a happier compromise, because it's, I'm getting more of that complaint from individuals, and then most recently, I had forgot about it another year ago when I read it to you or talked about it with you before, but at this point, I'd love to sit down and talk about what we can do, whether it's issues that instead of incarceration, a work release kind of environment where there's a compromise. No, we're not going to send you to jail so that you can't work, but yes, we're going to send you to a job where you have to pay that obligation.
That was the purpose of Recommendation 75. The purpose of Recommendation 75 was for those persons who do not have an attachable wage, in order to prevent their child support payment to be placed in arrears such that our enforcement team will bring that individual back before a judge who can result in incarceration serves no purpose. The concept was, yes, we are, unfortunately, the scenario is that the order when it stops doesn't mean it stops permanently. Once that information of the attachable wage is relevant, or somebody wins the lottery, we're coming after your money. But you can't have it both ways, with all due respect. You can't turn around and say, don't put our men in jail because they're poor, but then you have to say, well, but mom can't feed the child. I got that. But we've done a phenomenal job for what the legislation and statutes are written, how they are written. You also have to take into consideration that we're the court. It's up to the individual to prove who's seeking the monies, that that individual is unemployed under the table with verification or proof. Most people get mistaken and say, hey, Judge, why are you shut out our support? Part of the problem is because there's no evidence before me. I'm not an activist. I'm a referee, and I have to decide what's fair. So if you choose not to present the evidence so that I can attach his wage, I only am as good as the information I get. So let's knock, that a part of this is not a criminal case in which everybody's entitled to counsel, not in family court, unless you're in my delinquency or dependency, but not in domestic relations. Now, you're caught between a rock and a hard place, because we're dealing with poor people who can't afford counsel. And VIP and Community Legal Services does a phenomenal job. But the creation of it is, we were trying to work with then Madam Secretary of Department of Public Welfare, Estelle Richmond, who had a concern that primarily African-American men from Philadelphia would be incarcerated for child support. We worked well with her, and we were able to work out a system, and it was marshaled through their administration.
As an African-American man, I can appreciate that, but as a father of, in a neighborhood where there are a lot of single-parent head of households that are suffering, getting utilities shut off because they can't seem...
Unfortunately, that transcends race.
Yeah, it does. And what I want to be, I'm not a, what is that? You used the word arbiter. I'm an advocate for, and I can be an activist about. And so what I'd like to do is sit down with you to figure out how we can help some of those single-parent head of households figure out mutually beneficial ways to get that money, because it's...
That's part of my networking for jobs program, is that we're getting...
I need to learn more.
It's in the filing, I just spoke about it, where we have taken misdemeanor and felony reentries, and we're getting them jobs, and they're getting minimum wage of $10 an hour, 29% have medical benefits, but we've collected at least $20 million from these men who were ineligible with non-attachable wage to have an attachable wage. So we're working. I'm doing what we, Judge Murphy and I and my leadership working...
It might be that I just don't know that.
Oh, I'm sure, probably. But there's also misrepresentation, Councilman, that it's the judge's closed child support. I'm only as good as the information I get. It's up to good lawyers like your staff that use the practice in family court that will come in and provide that information. Then I can attach it.
So what I would like to do is work to find out more about it, so I can tell my constituents about it.
Absolutely.
Because left into its own devices, all I see is the disadvantage of a diligent parent who's holding down both ends of it and winding up with that burden of it.
Yet my mom was a single, I shouldn't say it, my mother's mother was a single mother.
My mom was a single parent.
No, I was blessed with both.
Although we found our dad, we found him, and he came around, but there was a couple of lean years.
We'll work with you.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. We could now move to the protection, emergency protection from abuse. Let me switch gears. We'll get to that. Let's speak to the substantial savings with the juvenile delinquent GPS monitoring effort. And is there a plan to expand this program to classes of individuals outside of juvenile delinquents, given the substantial savings you've received from the program? And how does this differ from electronic monitoring?
My GPS program?
Please, yes.
GPS is, it's like an electronic monitoring, more advanced. It tracks you every five seconds. I have developed a GPS center inside my courthouse, and we have a contract with a provider called Secure Alert, so that we're able to track and monitor all our youth every five seconds as opposed to an electronic monitoring device in which it was attached to a main phone line.
I see.
In the age of cell phones, and as a result of current fiscal concerns of families, many families now get rid of their landline because they're using a cellphone as the main point of contact.
Yes.
Well, with that goes out the opportunity to use electronic monitoring, which requires the use of your telephone.
I see.
Without that, my alternative is to place you. So we're able to...
Isn't a great option and alternative?
Not only a great option, it's a phenomenal alternative to detention, and it creates a sense of community safety, because I know where you are every five seconds. So for example, it could also be used in a defense matter. I had matters in which an individual was alleged of committing defense, yet the kid's on electronic monitoring, and I have the actual device and paperwork that says he wasn't where he was alleged to have been. I can also share another collateral benefit wasn't in, it talks to you. Our people are able to tell you, beep you and say, you better plug that in because the battery's dying or else we're coming for you. Well, the converse was, the converse was, one of our kids pressed a button and said, my father's having a heart attack.
Wow.
And we were able, and he was panicked, so we were able to save his dad's life. So there's a lot of benefits to a lot of these issues. Again, everybody wants to think it's a strong law enforcement tool. It is, but it's also beneficial in many other ways.
So now, let's go to the use of interpreters, interpreters in the courtroom. In 2013, the, your division utilized language and sign interpreters in 61 languages. In the district's attorney testimony, they stated, "If a member of the office needs to speak with a victim or witness who does not speak English, the staff member must first seek the assistance of another staff member using the language list within the office." Is there any cross-departmental cooperation, period, when it comes to interpreters?
That's a hard question.
Cross-departmental cooperation? You mean between the courts and the DA's office?
Exactly. Yes, for this particular need and service.
No, but not to my knowledge. The court does employ certified interpreters in most of the languages. We've also translated documents into an additional seven languages that are frequently found in our community in Philadelphia. So a certified interpreter has to be providing for any proceeding in Common Pleas Criminal Court, but we do not interface with the district attorney's office in terms of their intake process.
Okay. So that answers the why, unless it simply does not happen. Emergency protection from abuse. According to testimony, June 2013, 2,500-plus individuals received relief from emergency protection from abuse petitions, and another 2,200 received referrals for other services. How long does it usually take from the time an individual files a petition from abuse and when the relief is actually granted? And what is done in the meantime to ensure that that citizen has, who has requested relief, is indeed protected and remains safe?
Are you talking about people who come in and file the petition on traditional work hours? Because I think if that's the case, you know, if they come in during the day, then I would punt that to Judge Dougherty, because that would be handled by family court.
Okay.
Okay. So, and I think if you're talking about scheduling, that may well be the situation. People who come in on off-time hours into the Criminal Justice Center and see one of the masters get the ruling right away, the question then becomes, it would then go for, it's an emergency petition only, as they would issue during regular work hours in family court, it's then listed for a hearing. So I'm not sure if you're asking about the final order as opposed to a temporary order.
I'm interested most in... I'm interested most in what happens at family court. I mean, that's where my principal, my principal area of interest lies.
I apologize. When you said emergency, when you said the emergency funding, that was municipal court, and I was reading my emails. I apologize.
Multitasking is the norm here, it's not the exception. So speaking to the protection from abuse orders, that the time lapse, if any, between the time it's filed and when the actual relief is actually granted.
Well, you immediately file, you get an ex parte order if you meet the elements of the, of a, the requirements of the court order. Thereafter, you will get a court date, and the problem is not so much the listings, it's the follow-through.
It's the follow-through.
Follow-through.
So speak while the bell has rung.
I'm sorry?
Proceed then. I'd just like to try to honor the clock.
It's the follow-through. Many times the parties want to retain counsel, or the parties fail to appear, or they come in and they want to have an agreement. Many times they're filed, they're given, and at the next court hearing, the party may not show. I believe this year, we, I'll tell you. I want to tell you, I think there were, as a result of modifications, and there are about 33,000 court appearances with regard, over the whole last year with regard to PFA types of filings and court hearings, we had approximately about 11,000 filings last year. Yep, and 20, no, PFA's. It looked like, last year, there were 11,300 new filings, and we disposed of 12,000.
My goodness. Okay. My last question. No, clock is fine. I only have two questions after that, Mr. President, and I'm done.
You're maybe last.
Okay.
You're last. Go ahead. And actually, I'm going to ask, if you can, to actually take the chair shortly. Go ahead.
DVRP, an update, is Dyrp, DVRP?
YVRP?
Thank you very much. Just the status and the update, because I know there've been some changes over the recent years and the.
Well, YVRP is a fund in which I have, I believe I have about 10, 11 probation officers. They work with my, the standard is the 100 most likely to kill or be killed. So they're working with my most serious juvenile population, and I currently have a caseload approximately anywhere from 10 to 15 cases per probation officer, and they're only in allotted police district areas. But I also use my YVRP probation officers to work separate and apart to help execute my bench warrants and bring in those most at-risk kids who will be 100 most likely to kill or be killed.
Sure.
It's an evolving process. We're working hand in glove with them. There's YVRP in adult probation as well. So while we're kind of separated, it's, they meet, what, quarterly as this YVRP stakeholders?
Okay.
And they'll discuss and go through the unfortunate loss of life as a result of gun violence. And I could share with you, as a result of that information, that the National Form of Prevention of Youth Violence, which I previously mentioned, Commissioner Ambrose, Commissioner Ramsey, and I chair as a result of Mayor Nutter's appointment, we've concentrated in the 22nd District because that appears to be the highest percentage of our homicides, of our poverty, of it. The worst that could happen to Philadelphia is there. So we're trying to get into that, working with these stacks, and as well as all the various departments and stakeholders in Philadelphia to try to make it a holistic approach.
Sure.
Almost like it takes a village.
Indeed, indeed. I raise it again because of my awareness and trying to follow that in the form administration, pleased to hear that it's still intact.
Well, you probably think in AVRP, and that was under the former administration, and that does not exist anymore.
Okay. Thank you for the clarity. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I just have one brief question, and it's really in reference to, you know, a topic I know that's come up before, but it's in terms of the commingling, if you will, of victims, perpetrators, defendants, all, you know, prisoners, all in the same elevator system over at the CJC. And I know that, you know, obviously, the building's already built, there's not a lot that can be done regarding that and, you know, moving forward. I just wanted to get your thoughts on the new building that's being built, and how that's being taken into account. I didn't know if anyone wanted to comment on that.
That's a hard question. What we're doing is, we have an elevator bank, and we have an escalator that's going up to certain floors, and there will be stairwells that you can come in and out. What our concern is, we're trying to develop waiting areas that are separated. Today's defendants could be tomorrow's complainants and vice versa, and with regard to domestic relations, there are petitioners and there's respondents, and they're so often cross-fired, but at the end of the day, there's always going to be the human emotion of hostility and anger. So we can best control it by separating for the domestic violence, those accused and those who are the victims, by keeping them in separate waiting rooms. We have.
Is that in the new family court building you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I thought your question was, the new building. This is all about the new.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, we're taking it into consideration.
Okay. So you said that there's going to be, you know, a separation, and there's not.
Not in the, not in the elevator systems or escalators, no. There, one, it would be unfair to label someone. Just because you're accused of a crime doesn't mean you did it.
Sure.
So to follow that concept, defendants over there, you've already labeled somebody that has a constitutional presumption of innocence.
Absolutely.
So the question becomes one of, will have security. I put forth a request for additional security for this very purpose, because the most volatile of all courthouses would be family court.
Mm-hmm.
But what we've taken into consideration with regard to those particular cases, and I bring forth protection from abuse, that's the most prevalent where someone is accused of battering another. We will have separate waiting rooms. We have a separate waiting room, and the district attorney's office has an area where we can keep children so that they're not in the midst of two parents who hate each other.
Right.
You know, we can't control their emotion, we can control at least its effect on a child, and we will try our best to separate. But again, it's equal access to justice. I will never discriminate or segregate because someone accused someone of something.
Right, no, and I get it. I get it all day long. I mean, you don't want to just point a finger and, you know, this person, you know, they're still the accused. There, you know, there hasn't been a trial and a conviction or, you know, a judgment yet. But I guess in light of the fact that we know that there's sort of this culture of, "I'm going to get you if you say anything, if you tell, if you, you know, don't snitch, don't talk, don't cooperate." And so, you know, it's one thing if that's happening over at the CJC, and again, there's, you know, I assume, you know, we've looked at all the different things that could be done, should be done, should have been done from the very beginning. But going forward, how do we address it at the new family court building? I think, you know, we should be open for that discussion, and, you know, I'm glad that it's being taken into account.
Absolutely. And we've spoken with the architects or those in leadership during the Criminal Justice Center's construction to learn what they now believe to be their weaknesses so that we can try to create them into our strengths.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. So it appears that there, we're right in alignment with the clock. It appears that there are no additional questions for members of council. Very well, we thank you very, very much for your important work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. We are going to allow 10 minutes for the stenographer, and then we will move right to the Defender Association. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman.
Welcome.
And members of city council.
Please state your name for the record, and you're welcome to proceed with your testimony.
All right. My name is Charles A. Cunningham. I am the First Assistant Defender of the Defender Association of Philadelphia. Originally, this was written to say good morning, but obviously, we have moved on to the afternoon. So I will say good afternoon to Councilwoman and to the other members of city council. My name is Charles A. Cunningham. I am the First Assistant Defender of the Defender Association of Philadelphia, and I am pleased to appear before you to present the testimony in support of the association's budget for 2015 and the recommended appropriations. I am presenting the testimony of Ellen Greenley, the chief defender. Ms. Greenley is unable to be here at this time due to illness, but I can assure you that if there was any way on earth that she could have been here, she would most certainly have been here. In addition to our recommended appropriations, we are requesting an additional 1.4 million for five staff members for information technology, funding for medical insurance increases, and a small amount for general expenses. A 10 percent increase for medical insurance was automatically included in our budget in past years. Without explanation, the percentage was removed from the budget, and we now must renegotiate medical costs at the beginning of each year. I am requesting the percentage increase for medical costs be reinstated to our budget and the five-year plan. The association is continuing to assign felony and misdemeanor cases according to zone system put into place by the First Judicial District. Where the association once had three trial units to handle misdemeanors, felony bench trials, and felony jury trials, there are now six zones. The city is divided into zones, each having a distinct and separate court, and each having distinct and separate courtrooms. All cases arising from arrests made in a particular zone remain in the assigned courtrooms of that zone until disposition. This new system promotes more one-to-one representation of clients, more client contact, fewer missing files, and fewer continuances, thus keeping the cases moving through the system. The association's information technology staff is continuing its development of a Defender Case Management System, which is known as the DCM, for in-house use. All staff members are entering cases, specific data, entering case-specific data into DCM that is viewable by anyone interested in the progress of the case. Investigation reports, notes of testimony, and trial notes, and motions are included in this system. This is a labor-intensive process, and we are requesting three additional staff positions and two scanning positions in the unit to handle the increased workload. Attorneys must use the new e-filing system to file motions, and soon we will begin receiving discovery materials electronically. We must have sufficient personnel to manage these changes and the resultant workload, or we will not be able to keep pace. And I will add here that the criminal justice system runs only as fast as its slowest member. So it is quite important for the Defender Association to keep pace with the rest of the technology. The Sixth Amendment to the United States Constitution guarantees an accused in a criminal prosecution the right to be represented by an attorney. It also guarantees that if a defender cannot afford an attorney, the government will appoint one to handle the case at no cost to the defender. In Philadelphia, it is the Defender Association that provides this constitutionally mandated representation through a purchase of services contract with the City of Philadelphia. Defender attorneys provide high-quality representation to the Philadelphia citizens, adults, and juveniles in criminal matters. They also provide representation to those who are subject to involuntary mental health commitment proceedings, and to dependent and affected children who are under supervision, thank you, by the Department of Human Services. Defender services have been shown to be the most economical means for the city to discharge its responsibility to provide counsel. The Defender is an independent, nonprofit agency funded solely by the City of Philadelphia. It receives court appointments to represent approximately 70 percent of defendants who qualify for no-cost criminal representation, and overall receives approximately 60,000 new cases per year. Defender attorneys are in the courtroom every day, ready to put cases on and to keep the trial caseload moving along to completion. Through its probation, parole, and alternative sentencing unit, it provides assistance to sentenced prisoners in local county prisons by reviewing sentencing commitments and preparing early parole, re-pro, re-pro petitions, assisting prisoners to be released from jail and into the many alternative to incarceration programs such as drug and alcohol programs, house arrests, electronic monitoring, and et cetera, all of which help to control the prison overcrowding power problem and the resultant cost to the city. I believe we can all agree that the Defender Association is an effective, major player in the city's criminal justice system. Once again, I come to you to request your assistance to achieve salary parity for all of my staff members. My lawyers are paid less than their counterparts in the district attorney's office and the city solicitor's office. The social workers, investigators, paralegals, and administrative staff can earn much less than their counterparts in the city, and there is no reason for this. Their background, education, and expertise in their field meets or exceeds that of their city counterparts. In the past, former mayor John Street recognized the inequity and instituted a pay equity plan to raise attorney salaries. Likewise, former budget director and now city finance director Rob Duboe recognized the inequality in salaries between the city administrative and paralegal personnel and, excuse me, and directed the city's personnel department to conduct a study. At the conclusion, Mr. Duboe approved a pay equity plan to raise salaries in those categories. Although both plans served to increase salaries, they did not go far enough to achieve parity. At the conclusion of the plan, there was no additional review by the finance department, and so the association's salaries became stagnant, and the salary gap began to grow once more. As a councilman, Mayor Nutter recognized the salary inequities between the defender attorneys, district attorneys, and city solicitors, and was openly supportive of a pay plan to equalize salaries in those offices. As mayor, Mr. Nutter appointed his chief of staff, Eric Gillison, to work with the association on this subject. The association has met with Mr. Gillison on numerous occasions and received his agreement to develop a pay equity plan. This year, in the waning years of the current administration, there has been some funding dedicated for parity, $500,000, of which will be received in fiscal year 2015. This will not close the salary gap for the staff of 510, who lag anyways from $4,500 for the administrative staff to $25,000, and I'm talking about a homicide attorney who works in the Defender Association making $25,000 less than his or her counterpart in the district attorney's office. The Defender Association is always on the receiving end when the city imposes budget cuts on city departments. This is so even though the Defender is not a city department. In the past, negotiate, excuse me, in the past, the budget director would provide the Defender Association with the same percentage increases negotiated by the city's unions. A new contract has been negotiated with ASB District Counsel 47, and once it is ratified, will give its union members an immediate $2,000 bonus, one month later, a 3.5 salary increase, a 2.5 on July 1, 2015, and 3 percent on July 1, 2016, for a total of 9 percent. When we inquire as to our status with regards to the percentage increases, the budget director responds that there was no decision to extend those salary increases beyond DC 47. I come to you, members of council, to ask you to intervene on our behalf and put an end to this inequality between the Defender Association and the other staff of the city. Thank you for your support and your pass support, and thank you for listening. And I would like to add this, which is not part of Ms. Greenley's written remarks. Ms. Greenley has been the defender for over 20 years, and during the course of that 20 years, she has had two very strong priorities. Her major priorities have been, one, to ensure that the citizens of Philadelphia who walked into the courtroom with a defender at their side, and I'm talking about the indigent, that they had quality representation. That was priority number one. Her second priority. Her second priority has always been to see that her staff, those people that provide the services to the indigent, are treated fairly. And to say that parity is fairness is the beginning, parity is actually just the beginning of fairness, because it is not the same as equality, it is parity. But these people perform the same type of service to the city that the district attorney's office provides and that the city solicitors. They should not be treated differently when it comes to pay. And with that, we'll take whatever questions.
Thank you very, very much. I would seize the privilege of the chair and start my first question where you just left off, wherein you've given discussion to the issue of parity and stated in your testimony that compounded with this is low morale. You state as we have not had any substantial salary increase in years. And you've spoken to the parity and pay between the Defender Association, the district attorney's office, and the Law Department. Can you tell us the average tenure of a public defender? How long do they stay with the office, given this inequity?
I think that what we find in the office is this, that by the time our attorneys have reached their fifth year, they can no longer afford to stay in this office. I recently had the opportunity to sit down with one of my young attorneys, who came to us three years ago, and prior to working with us, he had worked in another office doing similar work. It's always been our practice that when we bring new people in, that we do not actually take into consideration their prior experience until they have, in essence, proven themselves as a defender. However, after they have gone through the entire rotation, and that means that they have begun to do major trials, then we will reexamine where they are, and most of the times, we will look at where they are, what their class would have been if they had come to us directly. When I look, I gave that attorney an increase, and because none of the classes, there's been so little separation between any of the classes, when that attorney got his increase, it pretty much amounted to about $15 a paycheck, and that's all. There is very little difference between that attorney who's come in five years ago and the attorney that will be coming in this year, because there have been very few pay increases since 2008. So matter of fact, we had one pay increase, which was 2.5, and that was the same year that the payroll deduction went up, so those attorneys only looked at 0.5% increase. You cannot continue to ask people to go out and handle major cases and compensate them as though they were just coming into the office.
And so, given that reality, how does that stack, or might you know, might you know how that stacks against the tenure of attorneys in the district attorney's office or the Law Department?
Let me just say this. The attorney, from what we've been told, the attorneys in the district attorney's office will get, and in the past have gotten, $10,000 after their third year. Those attorneys got that $10,000. Even though the city has now said that they have discontinued that process, the fact that those attorneys got that $10,000 has still put them far ahead of our same attorneys who did not get $10,000 after their three years. So they've been able to hold on to some of those attorneys far longer than we can, because our attorneys, who obviously, as time goes on, their families increase, their obligations increase, and therefore, they have no alternative but to leave this office.
But to move on. Very well. Let's now move to Councilman Good. No que, not at this hour. Very well. Councilman O, please.
Very much, Chairwoman. I don't have a question. I'd just like to add that as a former prosecutor, I do very much appreciate good-quality public defenders, and I think it is very important that we pay them properly. That doesn't alleviate the budget issues that we have, the great difficulties. Unfortunately, it is our moniker that we are the largest, we're the poorest large city in America. But still, even more so, you know, we're going to have to get creative and find ways to fund the public defender's office. As a prosecutor personally, I never wanted to go in a courtroom and do my best and leave feeling that someone else was unable to do their best, because the consequences are so important. So I just wanted to add, I think it is very important that we seriously look at how we fund the public defender's office. Thank you.
Can I add something?
Please.
You know, as I sat here in this chambers and listened to the testimony of the First Judicial District, I heard Councilman Jones talk about the fact that the programs that the First Judicial District has implemented has saved the taxpayers of Philadelphia a great deal of money, and that is very true. As a matter of fact, not only is that true, but it is something that needs to be examined, and it needs to be examined in terms of making sure that those savings, that some of those savings are reinvested in the justice partners, because the Defender Association is a very integral part of every one of those programs. And without a Defender Association, there would be no AMP program. Without the Defender Association, there would be no AVOC program. These are programs that have been designed to take away the necessity of bringing police officers to courtroom, of bringing witnesses in, of taking up valuable judicial time. We are a major player in those programs. We are a major reason why those programs are producing the savings to the city. We ask that those savings, that some of those savings be rechanneled to us so that we can get to parity. We have a probation, alternative sentencing unit that is involved in re, in paroles and getting early parole petitions signed so that people are able to get out of the prison systems in Philadelphia far faster. We get them out, we get them into programs, so that they can be hopefully become productive citizens of the City of Philadelphia. Those programs alone, the re-parole, save over $5 million, and in some estimates, close to $15 million. The Defender Association handles VOPs. We handle the vast majority of, and when I say VOPs, I'm talking about violation of probation. We handle the vast majority of those, even though the rules require that if there's court-appointed attorney, the court-appointed attorney should handle those VOPs. We step in, we handle them, because it is the most efficient way to do it. We are far more qualified to do it in many instances, and there again, there is a savings to the city, because the city does not have to pay additional attorneys to handle those.
Given the remarks, I would like to ask the administration to please come to the witness table. Rebecca Reinhardt, Budget Director. So given the testimony that's been presented by the Defender Association and given the hard data which speaks to, or at least validates, the observations made, what is the administration's response and/or response?
And just to make sure I'm clear on, your overall question is on the request for parity?
Yes.
Okay. So, am I done?
No.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Let's let the clock catch up.
Okay. The administration does recognize the issue of, that the Defender Association is discussing and is talking about today, and we have put in this budget, in the fiscal '15 budget, an additional $500,000, and then we, in the five-year plan, we put additional amounts so that in fiscal '18, there is $2 million more annually, starting in '18 and then in '19, to address the parity issue. The full cost estimate of what the parity would be, would be $6 to $7 million a year, which, as you know, we have limited resources for all of the pressing needs across the city, so our attempt at giving the $500,000 and then ramping up to $1 million and then $2 million extra a year is our attempt to move towards that goal.
Has the administration set down with the Defender Association recently, within the past year or whatever, to come to a number of $500,000 versus the reverse, start with a larger number and tip it the other way?
We have met with the Defender Association, we've met many times. The, what we have built into our five-year plan was what was affordable, given our financial constraints. The fund balance levels in our five-year plan are low, and we have, we had a little bit more room in the budget in the out-years of the plan, being '18 and '19, because there's several more years of the economic recovery at that point, which is why we made a decision to do a step approach to this. And as you've heard, I mean, from departments and agencies, elected officials across the city, everyone would want more.
Indeed.
And as the Budget Director, I can see that all of these, all of the requests, or many of the requests are valid and moving requests, but it's a matter of how much money we have and trying to balance that.
What is in the budget for the district attorney's office? Is there an increase or a decrease?
There is an increase for the district attorney's office.
The amount?
Uh, let me check. The district attorney right behind me. The increase is about $700,000, which, a lot of that is a one, 587,000, close to 600,000 is a one-time expense for lump-sum payments.
Okay. Okay, then, thank you. Councilman Johnson? Thank you, administration.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. How you doing, Mr. Cunningham?
Counselman.
Just a couple of questions. Out of 30% of defendants who qualify for no-cost criminal representation and do not receive it, what happens to that population?
That population right now would probably be receiving court-appointed attorneys. Those are court-appointed attorneys.
Court-appointed attorneys?
Right. Those are attorneys that, there are standards that are set for those attorneys that were, I guess those standards were put into place about 10 years ago or less. Those appointments then would be coming out of those attorneys that had qualified as court-appointed attorneys.
And what's the average, what's the percentage of cases that you handle a year?
We estimate that our average is probably around 70%.
70%?
Right.
And about how much, you spend about 70% on average per case?
Um, I don't, if you're asking for what the average cost of the cases?
Cost of each individual case.
I don't know what the average cost would be today. I do know that years ago, under the Street administration, they did a calculation and basically looked at it and said, oh, the average cost was about $335.
$335?
Right. Now, that doesn't include homicide cases, however.
Okay. And in terms of your public defenders, what's their average salary? How do you go about recruiting them?
Their starting salary is $48,500.
$48,000?
Yes. That's where they start, $48,500. How do we go about recruiting them? We actually have a website. People will contact us on our website. On occasions, we will send out recruiting teams to various locations and participate in those types of programs. And we also conduct four clinicals, one from Temple, University of Pennsylvania, Drexel, and Villanova. So some of our recruits come from there, which gives us an opportunity to observe some of those people. And we have many people who come to us, some are interns, and once again, we have the opportunity to examine those people and get some insight into their abilities.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Let's now go to a brief conversation about staff demographics, which is a recurring theme and interest across departments when we have testimony. According to the EEO report from April 1, 2013 that was submitted, out of 242 attorneys, 25 are African-American, nine are Asians Pacific, and eight are eight, and four of mixed race. The total number of non-Caucasian employees equals 37%. The total number of Caucasian employees is 196, equalling 63%. So given those numbers, speak to the percentage of individuals your office is charged with defending that are minority.
Well, I would say that the vast majority of our clients are minorities. So the exact percentage, I cannot tell you, but I would say without a doubt, the vast majority are minorities. There's no question about that.
So, speak to how, you've spoken to how attorneys are recruited. The, the, the concern is that the tip with the composition of staff and the composition of those that you serve are in the inverse, if you will.
Yeah.
How or what can we do so that we have?
We are, frankly speaking, we are looking into trying to do more recruiting, and we always, frankly speaking, one of our major concerns is always to try and to get qualified minority candidates, not only African-American, but also Latinos, and it is becoming increasingly difficult to find those candidates, because we had, we made offers to recruit Latino attorneys this year, and unfortunately, two of them went to Miami. Can't imagine why they would want to go to Miami instead of Philadelphia. And then I believe the third one, just, I'm not quite sure, but went to another, I guess, a larger law firm, so. They are a, a very valuable commodity, if you will, and there's a great demand for them. But we continue to try to do our best to recruit minorities, and as I said, we try our best to get minority candidates, and we obviously want qualified minority candidates.
Of course. And did I hear you say also that you've attempted to create a pipeline with the local law schools?
We do.
Was that in?
We do.
You spoke in your testimony regarding the zone system. How old is that, is that strategy, if you will?
Well, to be very honest with you, I think that we have the district attorney, and I would have to say that when he came into service, I shouldn't say service, 2009, he implemented the zone system within the district attorney's office. The courts had already started implementing somewhat of a zone system. So it has been in place since 2009, 2010. Am I correct about it? You're giving misinformation. At any rate, we have, within the Defender Association, begun to do our own zone system over the past, I'd say, year and a half, or actually probably closer to two years. We have implemented our zone system in a slower fashion than, because obviously, we want to make sure that in implementing it, we were in fact creating a system that was serving our clients properly. And we certainly did not want our clients to suffer while we were implementing our zone system.
Are there any, is there any synergy between, across, across systems around this strategy?
I'm, I'm--
Meaning, given the zone geography that you've laid out, is it consistent or parallel with the DA's office?
Yes, it is. It is. It's consistent with the district attorney's zone and with the First Judicial District zone. Yes. Yes.
Okay. With any other questions for members of the, please, Councilman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
I would just like to go back to indigent counsel. And since the city has withdrawn from their request for proposal, there's an opportunity for us to create something new and different. Or, in, from my view, I think we should have a study to look at what the strengths are in our system and where the challenges are. Having said that, I believe that going forward, it's my understanding, just for the edification of the members, the Public Defender's Office would get the first indigent case, and if there's multiple defendants, then that would go to a court-appointed process. I believe that the Public Defender's Office handles about forty percent of those, of the total cases. But having said that-
I'm sorry, of the total, no, it's higher than that.
Okay.
Definitely higher than that. We're closer to, I would think that with regards to the indigent cases, we are probably handling at least seventy percent of those cases. With regards to homicides, we're up to, we have about twenty percent.
Okay. The, I just wanted to see if you had any thoughts on the court-appointed process. And I would just add one comment to the mix, and that is, when you talked about getting monies from the savings in the courts, I really believe, we're the only state that the state doesn't pay for indigent counsel, and I really believe that that is a shortcoming in this whole conversation. We have to put more money into that conversation. But I wanted to beg on your expertise. I think that the Public Defender's Office in the City of Philadelphia is probably the best in the nation. And, but I just wanted to see what your thoughts were in creating a response to the indigent counsel that's court-appointed.
I think that there are a number of ways that that can be handled, and I think it's going to, that determination is going to be made by the city.
But we're hoping, we're hoping that if the charter change passes in the primary, that this council will have input into how that's determined.
Let me, let me, let me say this. Whatever system is created, whether it be a conflicts office, whether it be something along the lines of the federal system where they have the people who monitor those people, they regulate who gets appointments, they then monitor those people who get the appointments, they review those people's performance, whatever system is employed, one thing is essential, I believe, and that is that people have to be trained. And after you train people, you must monitor performance.
Yes.
Because if you don't monitor the performance, then you are not going to get what you are paying for. It is extremely important to train people. It is extremely important to monitor their performance, because without those two things, you will not have quality representation. And it should be about quality representation, not just putting a body in that courtroom. The indigent are entitled to quality representation. Okay?
Yeah, I think you hit the nail on the head, and I appreciate your testimony. Moving forward, the only thing that should be important for this legislative body is making sure that the constitutional and civil rights of the indigent are protected, and that means that we have to have standards, which means the skill set matches the complexity of the case, and there's adequate funding. And that's why I recommend, and I'll say it loudly, that the state should kick in. Thank you.
Thank you, Cal. Councilman Johnson?
Yeah, I just want to support my colleague and his efforts in making sure that we engage the state in this particular important issue. And I often look at, you know, I look at the work of your counterpart, the District Attorney, and how he came in and did a lot of reforms, and I also look at making sure, on the defense side, there's the same level of support being offered to individuals who won't have the ability to go by a private attorney. And everyone's innocent until proven guilty, and so the same level of support that we are focusing on, on your counterpart's side, that we should also be taking a look and paying attention to on the defense side as well. And so, just from your perspective, what are some of the best practices that you have seen throughout the country that put the Defense Office on par with our District Attorney's Office?
Well, I think, I think the question is one of, you know, when you look at the state systems, most of the state systems, the state attorney is on an equal pay with the defense attorney. So you are creating a system where you can attract qualified people to both sides. Okay? So I think that that's one of the keys to doing this.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions for members of council? Any closing comments, observations you'd like to make for the record?
One last comment.
Please.
And I would be remiss. I know that the Budget Director has talked about a plan whereby the Defender Association would get two million dollars and have, be up to two million dollars towards the parity in two thousand and eighteen. By the time that, first of all, we're talking about six million dollars, and the Defender Association, all along, has sat down with the city and said, "We understand that you cannot do this all at one point." And we were willing to abide by a plan. But we expected a plan that would put us at parity, not in two thousand and eighteen, but at least within a three-year period of time. The plan that the administration has come up with now, frankly speaking, only one million of that money would be on this administration. It would be the next administration that would have to fund the other part of that million dollars. And with that, I have no further comment.
Thank you very, very much. You stated what many members of council fully understand and recognize. The work that you do is important, and certainly does not go unnoticed. Thank you very, very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
If we could please invite the District Attorney to the witness table and his department heads. Please proceed with your testimony.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. I'd like to also just say good afternoon to members of council that are present, Councilman Johnson, Councilman O., my high school classmate, Councilman Good, not you, but also like to say hello to Councilman O'Brien. Madam Chair?
Yes, yes, yes.
I'd like to also just state for the record that with me at the table here is my first assistant, Ed McCann. Seated to my left, and seated to my right is the chief of our legislative unit, Mr. Greg Rowe. Madam Chair, please allow me to submit my fiscal year 2015 budget request in its entirety and to make an oral summary of the formal written document. Thank you. Madam Chair, I don't know how to say this anymore, but I love my job, and it is an honor to serve Philadelphia as its District Attorney. I want to first take a moment and thank those who deserve an enormous amount of gratitude and appreciation, my staff. The assistant district attorneys of my office fight every day for justice. They don't get paid a lot. They have to work many long hours. Their caseloads are far greater than those of their counterparts, and we expect excellence from them. The successes I can brag about today are because of the men and women of my office, and I wanted to acknowledge and thank them for their dedication. I am pleased to submit this testimony on behalf of my budget request for fiscal year 2015. I want to also begin by thanking Council President Clark and City Council for its great leadership in helping us secure additional funding from my office last year, funding that was critical to allow us to sustain many of our important diversionary programs. I also appreciate the collaboration over the last four years, which has allowed us to make many significant accomplishments. Last year, if you recall, my tone was a little different. In fact, it was a lot different. However, after much work and analysis, a reasonable appropriation was ultimately provided to my office. The mayor and his staff worked with us, and we could not have secured the modest funding increases we received without you. As I will explain in great detail below, while we have done so much good for Philadelphia, while we have tracked our performance, while we are engaged in the community, and while we are implementing and sustaining innovative programs, we remain underfunded. I understand the financial challenges of the city, but believe our office is still significantly short-changed in the mayor's proposed budget. I look forward to working with you and the mayor again to secure adequate funding. As you recall, Madam Chair, four years ago, I appeared before you and discussed my goals for the Philadelphia District Attorney's Office. I stated that we needed to be smart on crime. I explained that my mission of being smart on crime meant we needed to modify the way we held offenders accountable and assure the criminal justice system was victim-friendly. I explained that being tough on everything meant being tough, in fact, on nothing. I explained that we needed more diversionary programs, early plea offers that were serious, and that we had to double down on being tough on our violent offenders, those who deserved none of our sympathy. I also described how through justice reinvestment, we needed to make investments in my office, as well as the entire criminal justice system, and that such investments would ultimately result in both less crime and less waste in the criminal justice system. This approach was and remains comprehensive. We've accomplished many of these goals, Madam Chair. We've been successful because we have collaborated. And I'd like to thank the judges. I watched their testimony earlier. I have to thank my partner, Police Commissioner Ramsey, the Prison Commissioner, all the members of council, Ms. Greenlee in the Public Defender's Office, all of our members of the Criminal Justice Advisory Board. We have gained a mutual understanding of our needs and goals. We've assessed our challenges and limitations, identified what is possible, and forged ahead responsibly with impressive results. Implementing these goals is one thing. Sustaining them is another, and typically presents a different set of challenges that we must identify and address. Sustaining these accomplishments means we must continue to collaborate, look at data, identify best practices, make modifications, and support additional investments into the criminal justice system. Now, before I explain what my office needs financially, it is important to know what we have accomplished. Details are in my submitted testimony, but here are some of the highlights. Our charging unit consists of outstanding ADAs who charge what we can prove. When I took over, there were five assistant district attorneys in our charging unit, and for those of you for edification, the charging unit is the unit in my office that reviews the police paperwork, that approves or declines all arrest warrants, search warrants, and site arrests. I tripled the number of people in that unit. I believe Philadelphia was wanting to make sure that I only charged the right people, that I only charged them with the right crimes. Our community-based prosecution that all of our other partners have testified, all, you know, I've heard them say all great and glowing things about it, has been enormously successful, and we are building bridges with the community, and we are improving the quality of our prosecution. We divert several thousand people per year who possess small amounts of marijuana out of the criminal justice system. We also divert less serious misdemeanances into community service through our AMP program, the Accelerated Misdemeanor Program. Thirty-two percent of our common pleas dispositions are disposed of in smart rooms, meaning we reduce the time it takes to secure a guilty plea. The result is a more swift and certain punishment. We continue to implement e-discovery, a system that city law enforcement will use to process digitally discovery material from the time of arrest to trial. In other words, e-discovery will help us go paperless. Our community action centers continue to allow us to assist members in the community in their neighborhoods. Two additional centers will be opening this spring, one in West Philadelphia on Sixtieth Street and another in northeast Philadelphia, I believe in Longcrest. Our Public Nuisance Task Force continues to engage in our communities and improve the quality of life in our neighborhoods. We are tracking our performance. Even with our very antiquated case management system, more cases are being held for court, cases are resolved more quickly, our conviction rate is up. Misdemeanors, our cases are resolved more quickly. The median time to dispose of misdemeanors has decreased from seven months in two thousand and nine to four and a half months in two thousand and thirteen. More diversion, the rate of successfully diverting cases has risen from nine percent to twenty-five percent. Fewer withdrawn and dismissed cases. The rate of withdrawn or dismissed cases has dropped from forty-three percent to thirty-five percent over the same period. Those are just the misdemeanors. For felonies, more cases are held for court. Felony cases held for court rate has increased from ten percent, I'm sorry, has increased ten percent from two thousand and nine to two thousand and thirteen, from sixty percent to seventy percent. There's been a seven percent increase for gun cases, fourteen percent increases for robberies, and six percent increase in them being held for court for aggravated assaults. We have a better conviction rate. The overall conviction rate has increased from fourteen percent in two thousand and nine to twenty, in two thousand and thirteen, from forty-three percent to forty-seven percent. Cases are resolved more quickly. There's been a decrease in the total median time to final disposition from ten months in two thousand and nine to approximately eight months in two thousand and thirteen as it relates to violent and gun crimes. Last year, Madam Chair, homicides were the lowest they'd been since nineteen sixty-seven. This year, we are currently on pace to be even lower. More cases are being held for court. Held-for-court cases today for robbery, aggravated assault, and firearms act violations have increased between five and ten percent from two thousand and nine compared with where we are in two thousand and thirteen. We have a better conviction rate. Conviction rates for violent crimes overall have increased from two thousand and nine to two thousand and thirteen, approximately from twenty-eight percent in two thousand and nine to forty-eight percent in two thousand and thirteen. Rate convictions have increased from fifty-four percent in two thousand and nine to seventy-two percent in two thousand and thirteen. We continue to devote a substantial amount of our time in our focused attorneys initiative, which was, which has allowed us to meaningfully address gun violence. Yesterday, Madam Chair, I announced that one of my most veteran and well-respected prosecutors, Mr. Mark Gilson, will assume a newly created position in my office as the first director of conviction review for the Philadelphia District Attorney's Office, and he will work with our Post Conviction Relief Act unit and the Innocence Project when people bring to our attention allegations of those that are factually innocent for having been convicted of our most serious charges. Now, my budget detail. I'm requesting one point eight million dollars more than the mayor's budget proposal, a portion of which is non-recurring. Class one hundred, I'm asking for an additional nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Four hundred and thirty thousand dollars would be to cover the lost of JAG funding. It's a federal budgetary grant process that comes to the city from the Department of Justice. We were informed by the Department of Justice that if the city believed the programs initiated with JAG funding are important, which includes our smart rooms and bench warrant court, then the city should fund them. That has not occurred. Unfortunately, I ask that if you think these programs are important, that you include the appropriate funding in the budget you enact. Five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars would be to allow us to retain the best and brightest in our office, to sustain our initiatives, and to expand and implement new ones. Under class two hundred, Madam Chair, I am requesting five hundred and five thousand additional dollars in class two hundred funding. And this is in three categories: maintenance, e-discovery, and case management, and a one-time software licensing. Class four hundred, we are requesting additional three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in one-time funding to allow us to replace three hundred outdated computers. The majority of the six hundred and eighty active desktop computers in our office were purchased when the productivity loan was in place. See those commercials when Apple, they say Apple was invented in that garage? I think our computers were from that garage. And so we're asking for additional funding so that we can replace them. OIT thankfully purchased two hundred and eighty-five computers on our behalf at the end of fiscal year two thousand and thirteen. Now, I want to compare our office to other agencies and other counties, and really, I don't know how many times I need to say this or how many different ways to say this. We are underfunded. We are underfunded in comparison to other counties across the nation, in comparison to other agencies in the city. We are underfunded in comparison to our percentage of the overall city budget since two thousand and eight. We are underfunded in comparison to the rate of inflation since two thousand and five. We are underfunded. We are underfunded. I want to show you just briefly. I'm trying to help get you back on schedule, so I'm trying to make my presentation as brief as possible. The chart that I'm showing you now, just again, is a reoccurring chart that I bring. I've updated it this year. It's the Philadelphia District Attorney's Office as compared to, how many counties? About 15 other counties, Madam Chair, across this union of ours, taking into consideration the incident of violent crime. If you were to compare the city of Philadelphia to these other 15, only one county funds its district attorney's office less, and that is Wayne County, Michigan, Detroit. And again, I recognize that the city has had financial difficulties during this great recession. I don't doubt that. But this chart depicts that despite that, from fiscal year '08 to the proposed fiscal year '15, it shows the percentage change for other city departments, both public safety and technology budgets. The prisons has increased 8.1 percent, police 13 percent, fire 9.27 percent, OIT 140.29 percent, the sheriff 21.49 percent, and the district attorney's office budget has increased over that same time span by 4.62 percent. Madam Chair, in college, I would yell "we are," wherever I was on campus. I think you know where I'm going with this. Wherever I was on campus, I would yell "we are," and people would respond "Penn State" as Councilman Johnson has so eloquently done for us today. Today, Madam Chair, as District Attorney of Philadelphia, wherever I am, if I say "we are," the only possible response is "underfunded." The successes that have been made to improve the criminal justice system here in Philadelphia has only occurred through collaboration, and I am extremely appreciative for the role the city council has played. I appreciate that the mayor and his staff have been receptive to our concerns, and there's been a positive process this fiscal year, where in years past, there was no process. The process, however, needs to have impact and meaning to yield results. I hope that together, we will reach a consensus on how to appropriately fund the district attorney's office so that we can provide a safer Philadelphia for all of us to live, work, and raise our families. Madam Chair, with that, I thank you for your attention, and I will answer any and all questions that you pose to me.
Thank you for the testimony, and thank you for the charts. It's really painted the picture quite graphically of the realities that you're facing as a leader in that department. A couple of questions before we move to members of council. Speak to what inspired the Innocence Project.
What inspired the Innocence Project? You might have to ask them what inspired them. You know, my job is to do justice. My job is to seek a safer city, to ensure that those that are accused of crimes are only the right ones that are charged, and that we treat them fairly. And that is what we aspire to do every day. It is my understanding the Innocence Project was created because people really believe that in some jurisdictions across this country, there were people that were on death row, there were people that were, had been convicted of homicides or rapes, that were not just maybe the statutes weren't applied correctly, or the jury was instructed inappropriately, but that they were factually innocent. And so, that is how the Innocence Project, I believe, was created and how they're funded. And so, they, when they have a case in which they believe an accused person, the person that's convicted, is factually innocent, they actually conduct an investigation of their own, with their own resources first.
I'm very familiar with the national effort.
Yes.
And it is exactly the way you just described.
Correct.
And what a relief when we see that those prosecuted then get relieved of that circumstance.
Correct. And so, as a result...
By learning your testimony, however, that you're seeking to do that locally, is that not what hurts?
No, so I've created a conviction review unit, and that is to address the fact that in recent years, there has been, in many ways, almost an explosion in funding for the Innocence Project. Chief Justice Castillo wrote an opinion regarding the federal defenders' use of federal tax dollars to inject themselves into state court issues, and our office has to respond to all of those.
I see.
And so, my Post Conviction Relief Act Unit handles approximately 500 cases a year, where they handle these very serious issues that often new evidence is brought and requires a hearing. So, I thought, when I ran in 2009, I talked about conviction integrity. And the District Attorney of Manhattan created a conviction integrity unit. The District Attorney Craig Watkins of Dallas created a conviction integrity unit. I'm always trying to find the best practices. And so, you know, but I thought what we needed to do first was to reorganize our charging unit and to change the culture of our charging unit, from being one of where we put people who were punished to where we put people that had demonstrated excellence and good judgment. And we did that. We had to reform our office because, as you know, as we all know, when I took office, our city had the lowest conviction rate of the 40 largest urban areas. Approximately 59 percent of all of our felony cases were being dismissed at the preliminary hearing. People thought that was just my rhetoric until the Philadelphia Inquirer and its series, "Justice Delayed, Denied, and Dismissed," chronicled the myriad of failures of our criminal justice system, Madam Chair. And so, I had to embark on fixing, it's almost like an overhaul, and changing the oil of a speeding Ferrari on 95 as it was moving. And that's what we did in trying to turn around this criminal justice system. I'm very proud to report today, as a result of the wonderful collaborative effort, like I said earlier, with the First Judicial District, the police department, the commissioner of the prisons, the defenders, court-appointed council, we've really tried to address all of these systemic issues that were chronicled in that, you know. But I had to prioritize which things we could do and when. And so, it took me unfortunately until April of 2014 to create this conviction review unit.
Very well. Before we move to members of council, I'm going to speak to my continuing interest around demographics.
Yes, ma'am.
And in your testimony, you state that your office is up to 536 total full-time staff, 29 percent a minority. Please speak to the percentage of those that you, the breakdown of the percentage of those that are prosecuted by your office.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad you brought that to our attention. I had prepared all of those answers last year, expecting Councilman Good to ask, and he didn't. So, I'm very proud to report to the members of city council that the District Attorney's Office of Philadelphia employs more minority attorneys than any other law firm in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. I'm also very proud to report to the members of council that since I have been the District Attorney, 50 percent of all of my offers have been extended to minorities. That being said, at the time that this was prepared for me, I think 35 of our attorneys were African-American, 20 were Asian, 13 Hispanic, a total of 231 were white. Those are our attorneys. 40 percent of our support staff are members of, are minorities. You know, I heard you ask earlier, Mr. Cunningham, about their efforts. I take this very seriously. I recognize that the supermajority of both the defendants and the victims of crime in Philadelphia are black and brown people. And so, we do all that we can. I make it a point of my own to attend the National Black Prosecutors Association's conference, where there's a job fair. We have a minority job fair at our office where, I mean, reception every year. I've taken upon myself, I also teach at Temple and Villanova Law Schools as an adjunct faculty and try to find students through that effort as well that may wish to become prosecutors. 50 percent of my deputies are minorities, so I take very seriously that our office has to reflect the city that it represents, which also means I do all that we can to hire Assistant District Attorneys and staff members that speak Russian. We have a very large Russian population. We have a very large Korean population in Philadelphia. We have a very large Cambodian population. And so, we're doing every and all things that we can to identify the best, the brightest, and to attract them to Philadelphia for a career of public service.
Okay. You've spoken well to the answer to that question. Now, guide us or provide information on the recruitment of women for leadership positions of your deputies. How many deputies do you have?
The majority of our deputies are women. Is that correct? Let me see, we have, I have to count up. We've got the law department, we have, we have three women deputies.
Out of total...
Out of seven.
Okay. Thank you very, very much.
I failed Algebra II at Central High School. I'm sorry. But out of our deputies, three are female.
Thank you.
The majority of the attorneys of our office are females.
That's something to celebrate.
Yes, ma'am.
Very well. Now, let's move if we could.
I'm trying to drive our supervisor.
President has returned.
And 50 percent of our supervisors are women.
Okay, very well. So, I'm going to ask Councilman Greenlee, and I'm going to return the chair to the president.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Councilman.
Okay. Just a couple, couple quick ones. I know the Focus Deterrence program you talked about, and I know it's down in Councilman Johnson's district. I assume you're calling that a success so far? Is that a fair statement?
Not only am I calling it a success, but the inventor, David Kennedy, touts what we have done in Philadelphia to be the best example of focused deterrence.
And I guess, and obviously, everything comes down to funding, but is there a plan to maybe expand that to other areas?
Well, again, Mr. Councilman Greenlee, I believe that we have to have the political will to reduce the gun violence. The city of New York had the political will to reduce the gun violence. They used to have approximately 2,400 homicides a year, with about 85 percent being committed by handguns. Last year, they had fewer homicides committed with handguns in a city of 8 million than the city of Philadelphia did in a city of 1.5 million. They had the political will to reduce the gun violence. So, if you're asking me, should we increase replicate across the city, focused deterrence? I have to first say that I am very thankful Commissioner Ramsey and his command staff have implemented many innovative programs across the city, many of them, we don't even know their names. But with all of those, with the holistic approach of those programs, we have seen a significant reduction in gun violence. Part of that is the program that we created that is now being replicated in Harrisburg to ask for high bail for every defendant that unlawfully possesses a firearm. But yes, I believe focused deterrence is smart. It's smart on crime. We're not just shooting a shotgun wildly. We are identifying those that are most, we're identifying the most violent neighborhoods through empirical data, and then identifying further those groups and individuals that are most responsible for that violence. So, yes, I believe focused deterrence is a tremendous success. If you were to ask the people that live in that part of South Philadelphia, they would say yes. If you look at the reduction in shootings and homicides in that area, of course, the quantifiable answer is yes. How to proceed to develop that in other sections of the city is something that I'm, of course, willing to work with the police and council and the appropriate law enforcement agencies to find the best and the smartest way to do that.
Okay, thank you. And the other question, I might be stealing one of Councilman Jones's question here, because I know she, he talks a lot about witness intimidation, but I know there was some increase last year. It's one of the things you asked for, that we tried to help you with. How successful have you, would you call that, in your witness intimidation program in trying to fight that problem?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Council President. I want to thank, again, for the record, Council President Clark and my councilman, Curtis Jones Jr., for championing the increases that were resulted in our being able to better serve those that were intimidated and were, you know, threatened. And so, but witness relocation, witness protection remains a significant issue for our office to find appropriate funding. And this is something, people were talking earlier about parity, talking about, there's no other agency, there's no other law enforcement partner, you know, that has to do that. We have to come up with the funding to protect people. In every homicide case, we are seeing some form of witness intimidation or threats. I'm very thankful that through our work with Chief Justice Castillo and the Supreme Court and a committee that was created by them, we were able to create in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania indicting grand juries. Through the use of indicting grand juries, we have been able to hold for court many defendants that in the past would have eluded justice because they would have threatened the victims, would have intimidated the witnesses while they were waiting for the 60 bus, and would have shown up for court, and there'd been no witness. So, we're making significant headway there. I think we're probably closer to 1,200 cases that have gone before the indicting grand jury. So, that's an amazing effort. But we do need more funding for witness relocation. This is right here. Right. So, currently, we're receiving $1.1 million from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. That's not just directly to us, that's spread out. That's what they give for the entire state. And it's a shame, to be quite honest with you, that the majority of the witnesses that we relocate, we only move them from one Philadelphia housing authority property to another.
Doesn't really get it done. Yeah, I got you. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for being here with us today. Seth, Mr. District Attorney, we appreciate your hard work that you are doing here on behalf of the city of Philadelphia, keeping our city safe. Thank you for your partnerships with our various community groups through programs such as Focus Deterrence. And thank you for bringing out your team and participating in our first annual Point Breeze 5K1 Run Walk and Health Fair, which the winner of the race was one of your assistant...
That is correct. Matt Gerke of South Division won the inaugural Point Breeze 5K.
Yes, he did.
He won, but Councilman O'Brien had the best-looking legs, I think.
I ain't looking at nobody's legs, but we appreciate your support for an awesome cause, raising awareness for pancreatic cancer. In all seriousness, you know, you have done an outstanding job since you arrived as a District Attorney, implementing your reform, implementing your reforms based upon your initial platform once you arrived in 2009. And so, I'm definitely advocating for, you know, increasing your budget, however we can be supportive of your act, of your efforts, because similar to the previous presentation we just saw from, on the First Judicial District, and a nice chart, and talked about some savings that they're doing, and some, some of the great work that they're doing, which I think is great. I also recognize, and from working closely with your office, that you are definitely on the ground in the communities and finding innovative ways of making our, making our city safe. A couple of questions regarding the budget and its impact on your overall resources and your ability to do your job. There's, when it comes to state and federal funds, you're going to lose a total of $688,000. Is your office, or are you working and advocating in partnership with those elected officials on the state and federal level to really push them to continue advocating to make sure we will bring those resources home?
Well...
Because essentially, we'll be filling this gap, which, you know, we're advocating for an increase for you, but I'm always a strong advocate of making sure that those individuals represent us on the federal and state level.
Correct.
They aggressively go after trying to seek funding to bring back home to help you do your job.
Correct. And first, let me recognize, I kind of made a joke about it, but you mentioned my office having a team, 15 members of our office were at your Point Breeze. I think that speaks to the community-based prosecution, and I really wanted to bring in a culture where it wasn't just that the district attorney went to community meetings. Everybody was expecting...
It was that team from that area.
Right. It's more important that the Assistant District Attorneys that work for the citizens, that they understand their plight, that they understand how it feels and where they're coming from. And so, I'm very glad that we are making inroads. We're not where I want us to be, but we're getting much closer to where we should be. So, I want to thank you for recognizing that. As you address the question of, yes, we have a loss of federal funding, I'm very thankful Senator Casey always tries to identify for us, burn grant funding. But the caveat with almost all the federal funding is that it's to help us to track our performance. It's to implement programs like the Smart Courtrooms that pay for the salaries to show that the Smart Courtrooms can work. But their goal was for justice reinvestment. I went and testified, Councilman... I went and testified, Councilman Wolf. Yeah, Congressman Wolf, Congressman Fatah, I went and testified at a subcommittee that he was a member of. And the whole goal is for justice reinvestment. The federal government says, we'll give you this money to start this program, but once you're saving money for the, for the state government, or you're saving money for the local government, if it's important to them, they're going to have to reinvest. They're going to have to put up some money too. And so that, you know, is where we are. I'm trying to find money everywhere. As you know, we created a program here called The Choice is Yours. I'm very thankful, you know, I went out and visited the district attorney of San Francisco for a program for first-time nonviolent offenders, crack dealers who otherwise would go to state prison for a year, at about forty thousand dollars a year, with a recidivism rate of about sixty-three percent. We are now putting, put about ninety-three, or close to a hundred people were in the program as a result purely as a grant from the Jerry Lenfest Foundation and the William Penn Foundation. And we spend about four thousand dollars a year for those individuals. And instead of going to state prison, they receive literacy training, job skills training, life skills training. And it's been a success. But again, for us to continue that, the money's going to have to either come from the city or the state.
Okay, let me ask you this, and I'll wrap up, Council President, and go to the next round. So in terms of justice reinvestment, has there been analysis done that says, based upon the reforms that we have implemented, the diversionary programs, the various programs that we have introduced that will provide individuals an opportunity to not have to go into the system, which will be a more than heavy burden on the taxpayers? Has there been analysis done that says, based upon these diversionary programs that have been implemented over the past two- to three-year time period, this is a significant dollar amount that we have saved the city of Philadelphia?
Right, right. Well, we believe that these savings, the diversionary programs, just as a minimum, we're being very, very conservative, about one point two million dollars a year is being saved. And that, you know, and I think if you were to look at other programs that we've created, you would see that the savings also to the state. Right, if we're not sending a hundred people to state prison at forty thousand dollars a person, we're making significant savings for them. So we're showing a lot of savings, like with SAM, right? So instead, we had ten percent, ten percent, Mr. President, of our caseload, about seventy-five hundred, the defendant's most serious charge was the unlawful possession of a controlled substance, that being marijuana. And I found that we were just clogging our court system with these cases, spending thousands of dollars on court overtime, police overtime, right, for the police, counsel for the indigent, creating discovery, analyzing the drugs, thousands of dollars, where someone possessed about ten, fifteen dollars' worth of weed. It made no sense. And so now we're, but we're creating a lot of savings. E-discovery has the potential to save the city a lot of money. But again, we're, we're, we are the ones really with the burden of creating these things and trying to use the staffing, and trying to figure the way to do this. And I'm just asking, look, you've got to reinvest in us if you want us to continue to do this.
I'm with you on that as well. Again, I'm advocating for you to get the type of support you need. I'd also think it would be helpful, as you move forward in the future, to maybe to have somebody to actually calculate what the savings actually look like and how it benefits the city of Philadelphia moving forward. It just makes part of your advocacy for your particular agency, you know, strong for the most part, because we have limited resources, we have to make choices. So we're negotiating between the administration and, and, you know, competing interests amongst even the seventeen council people in terms of their home projects, knowing that you need the type of support you need to do to your job as well. So that's pretty where we're at.
And Councilman, I agree. And part of our request was for an increase in the class, I don't know if it's two hundred or four hundred, for our case management system. I've heard other people testify.
Yes, that's...
And the reason, the case management system that we have right now was actually created as a computer program to send out subpoenas. It wasn't meant as a method for us to do empirical analysis of data. But I'm just thankful I've got some smart people like MacGyver that work for me, that are taking, you know, paperclips and rubber bands and created a system that we're trying to get this information, but it's nowhere near adequate. And that's why I'm asking for additional funding from OIT, which we so, I'm sorry, I showed in the chart, it's gone up about a hundred and...
I saw that.
Twenty, or a hundred and forty percent.
Yes, I saw that. Thank you, Mr. District Attorney.
Thank you, Councilman. Good afternoon, Mr. DA.
Good afternoon, Mr. President.
We have a quick question. Your interpretation of the state constitution, can a municipality apply a civil penalty for guns?
Well, again, this is the million-dollar question. And it's my interpretation, and those are much smarter than I, do much better than I did in law school, that the Constitution of the Commonwealth preempts municipalities from laws that affect the right to bear arms. And so, I wish that weren't the case, I wish that we could do more locally, but everything that we do locally has to be consistent with the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as well.
That laws, when you say from implementing laws, does that mean criminal code? Is it your belief that it, that the Constitution references both criminal and civil?
Yes.
Okay. I asked for your answer, and you gave it to me.
I am, of course, very willing to sit down and have people that work with me, to sit down with people that you appoint, to see if there's any way that we can find a better way for the citizens of Philadelphia to enact legislation that could make a difference. But until then, I have to default to that it has to meet the four corners of the Constitution and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. But I'm very interested in finding creative ways to work with you, to find a solution, and pushing the envelope if necessary, when appropriate.
Okay, well, it's always appropriate when it comes to guns.
Yes, sir. You're preaching to the choir.
I understand.
Okay.
I understand. I just, some people have a certain interpretation about the Constitution and the Crimes Code deals with, doesn't necessarily deal with civil penalties. But okay, well, I'll interact with you later on. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chair recognizes Councilman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to amplify Councilman Bill Greenlee's interest in focused deterrence, and to, again, edify David Kennedy's testimony here on February tenth. He said, "What's going on there is fantastically impressive. It's well thought out, it's systemic, it's beautifully focused, the interagency work is exemplary." He further added, "We're so impressed with it that we're trying to model it in other cities." I'd just like to express our appreciation for the incredible and life-saving work that District Attorney's Office is doing in South Philadelphia. And I'd like to thank your office for the high level of community buy-in, and that's the engine that drives this conversation. I'd also like to thank the District Attorney's Office for listening to the community and engaging with them, and, and credit the community for making this sustainable. We're all looking forward to the expansion beyond South Philadelphia. And again, I'll quote a gentleman by the name of Ed McCann, who also testified at that hearing, and he said, "The other thing I'd like to talk about is expansion. The thing about this program is, we're all in this together. So we can't take a step unless everyone agrees to take a step. That's the important thing. So we're ready to take the step, but everyone else has to take the step as well." My question is, the next step. I introduced a piece of legislation that called for the Office of Violence Reduction. I did that because I thought it could be a comprehensive way of assembling and furthering this conversation as stated by Ed McCann. Would you support that, or how do you think we can make the next step?
Well, I consider the Office of Violence Reduction the District Attorney's Office.
I am for that.
I'd first like to thank you for recognizing, again, focused deterrence. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Brian Lentz was the chief focused deterrent of the Gun Violence Task Force when we ushered in focused deterrence, and is led now by Lauren Veraldi. We also have to thank Caroline Keating and John Delaney, who was our deputy for our Trial Division, who is here. So it's been a team effort, but Mr. Kennedy, as you know, stated that it's the best example of focused deterrence is what we have here in Philadelphia. And that's because of the First Judicial District, the judges have really gotten involved. It's because of the probation and parole department, how they're involved. It's because of, when we see that one of these target individuals and their group has used a weapon, we turn their electricity off. And so it's through the help of PICO and through Comcast, we've turned cable off. And so when we're doing that, it's really making a difference. And so I have to thank everyone that's associated with our effort. But yes, we would love to replicate it in other parts of the city. We would like to expand it. As I stated earlier, there are a lot of great programs that the Police Department has also innovated. I want to figure out what's the best thing, because what's best in South Philadelphia might not be what we need to do in a different part. So my figure, what we want to do is try to figure out what is the, what's the problem? To treat it almost as a public health issue, what is the problem affecting that part of the body of Philadelphia, so that we can best address it and heal it?
And that's why I think we should recognize that this is a strategy, and that's why it can be replicated in different ways throughout the city. I have two questions, and the second question is in three parts, and it has to do with information...
It reminds me of a law school exam. I'm ready, okay.
It has to do with informational technology.
Yes.
And the what is, how would you categorize the informational technology infrastructure in the District Attorney's Office? And the second three-part question is, as the District Attorney, are you budgeting for capital dollars in fiscal year fifteen? When was the last time you received capital dollars for IT? And has there been a conversation with the administration for capital dollars for IT?
All right. And so the first part, the overall status of our funding for our information technology, the informational technology systems that we have are unsatisfactory. I can answer that. I can answer another part of it is that we did receive, I'm very thankful that the mayor's chief of staff worked with us to purchase, I think I have testified today, two hundred-plus computer desktops. That was of significant assistance to us. That part I know. I'm very thankful for the mayor and for them identifying those computers for us. But the balance of the IT stuff, I'm going to let Ed McCann answer for you.
Good afternoon, Councilman.
Good afternoon.
I would say our, our biggest problem is, is a personnel problem, in that, as I think it's pretty typical in many city agencies, maybe not just in Philadelphia, but everywhere, our staff, and not because of their training necessarily, but because of, it's hard to attract really good IT staff to a city when they have to live within the city and their, and the salaries are low. So we don't have an ability to do a lot of things that we need to do in terms of programming changes and things of that nature, which makes it incumbent upon us to enter into contracts with other outside vendors so that things can be done, particularly with the E-discovery system, which is a mammoth project, as you know. And there's all kinds of systems that it has to interface with, and there's been a lot of difficulty rolling it out, because we really don't have the ability to do that in-house. Now, the administration's been very helpful along the way in terms of addressing shortfalls in Class Two Hundred as they come up, but I don't really think there's a long-term plan. And there needs to be a long-term plan, so that we can attract some people in-house that can do some of these things for us without necessarily always going to outside vendors. The infrastructure is very, it's very weak. It's like a rotary phone in terms of, in terms of what we have. So while I very much appreciate the responsiveness that we've gotten from the administration since last budget cycle, I've had many conversations with Mr. Gillison about short-term things, and have gotten a very good response. There hasn't been a long-term plan IT-wise for the DA's office, probably in at least ten years. We haven't been part of the capital budget discussions. We've had many meetings with my staff. I've met with three different IT directors that this administration has had about getting us a new case management system. We've had many, many conversations, it hasn't gone anywhere. And I think the thing that's the most frustrating thing for us is that, while, again, the short-term requests have been met with approval and a lot of attention by the administration, there hasn't been any long-term thinking about what we need and what, frankly, what everyone else that's in the criminal justice system needs, because everyone's always asking for data and performance measures. And we basically have two guys that are tremendous that are doing it, but they're doing a lot of stuff by hand. They're actually going through case records by hand to come up with some of the data that we have. There's no magic button to push. That's years off if we start it now. And that's the problem. We need to start thinking about long-term solutions, and there hasn't been any thinking about long-term solutions.
Thank you. I have some more questions. I'll wait for round two.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. District Attorney, as a young person growing up in the streets of West Philly, I'd never thought today I would spend so much time with judges and district attorneys, but it is a welcome evolution in my life.
Your parents raised you well.
Thank you. I want to say thank you on a number of notes. One, for you working with us on hearings dealing with bail reduction, and I wanted, you know, the low amount of bails and coming to testify, and we were able to talk to the courts, and people are receiving higher bails as a result of it. And I don't think there is a, I think there is a correlation between higher gun-related bails and longer stays in prison and making crime go down a notch or two. So we want to thank you for that. More recently, oh, and also I want to thank you for your focused deterrent, and let you know that crime doesn't stop at South Philly. It does...
Some people cross Grace Ferry Bridge.
Yeah, there you go. And so, we anxiously look forward to some rendition of that in troubled spots of not, you know, in and around West Philadelphia. Also, for the Community Action Center that you're going to open up on North Sixtieth Street, which is often, too often, an epicenter for bad things, and your presence there will be a welcome addition to crime deterrence, and so thank you for that. Having said all of that, we recently had hearings on home invasions by impersonators of utility workers, and want to make you aware that a lot of the groups that I talk to are now, actually, if we catch these folk or people who victimized women in this pocketbook snatching, and particularly in the Overbrook Park section, that the engagement of those community groups, they're going to start showing up at court to help out with the sentencing phase, to basically say to the judges and to really take seriously, not that you don't, but in a, in a real strong statement, to say that we won't tolerate this. Good neighborhoods are going to speak back. So look for us in our recruitment of town watch members that are going to play that role. Coming to my question is dealing with forfeitures. Now, I'm not sure as to the organizational charter, who is responsible for property that is confiscated in the commission of a crime, and how that repurpose of those properties are sold, and if you could talk about that, particularly in light of the loss of the Department of Justice Assistance Grant. Can some of those dollars be diverted to that for your smart rooms and bench warrant court?
All right, so good afternoon, Councilman.
Good afternoon.
And so you've mentioned several different things. You talked about focused deterrence, and while we don't have focused deterrence in other districts, we do utilize Gunstat. So monthly, I have a meeting with the six bureau chiefs, who represent the six geographic police divisions. We mirror the Police Department. We meet the first assistant, myself, the deputy for gun violence and Guggen and narcotics trafficking, the deputy for the Trial Division. We sit down with each of those chiefs, and we go through a litany of things to try to identify the most violent individuals in hotspots, as we've identified with the police in each of those districts. So it's very similar to focused deterrence, other than we just don't have the call-ins and we don't have a lot of the services that we provide to those individuals. But that is something, again, that we're working...
Well, I think it's an effective tool.
That we're working with the Police Department, I think, very effectively. You mentioned the CACs, and yes, we will have a new Community Action Center on, I think, Forty-seven North Sixtieth Street, right where I used to catch the Forty-sixth Bus coming home every day from Central High School. And, but we wouldn't have that without the assistance of the organization Achievability. We'll be co-located with them. I think we're going to work... We'll be co-located with them. I think we're gonna work out the details, probably pay them $1 a year. But I think having our presence there will be significant. I hope it will be, and I hope to work with your office and Councilwoman Blackwell's office there at that one spot, to help train the community. To the second issue that you were talking about, so that we can help train people in their community for what's important to them. And in many parts of the city, home invasions, car thefts. While we talk about gun violence, Mr. President, and homicides and the shootings, those violent crimes are only about 5% of the crimes that take place in the city. The supermajority of the crimes are property crimes, are crimes in which people are selling narcotics. The very crimes that through town watches, through civic associations, through efforts where they work with law enforcement, we can prevent those crimes. And so we look forward to that. Your other, your final question-
Wasn't the final.
Okay.
They wanted to be the final.
Was as it relates to asset forfeiture.
Right.
And so we have a Public Nuisance Task Force, and the chief of that is Ms. Beth Grossman, who is here. And she also supervises and handles all of our asset forfeiture. So she does a tremendous job coordinating all that.
How much money do you generate through that?
Well, that unfortunately is something that I'm not allowed to testify or to really give-
He's the fifth.
Not playing the fifth, just that the Asset Forfeiture Act of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania really states, it gives us the ability, when individuals use vehicles or homes or anything of value for the commission of a crime, or to use as the focal point of that criminal activity, that those properties can be taken, can be seized in civil court. Something totally separate and distinct from what goes on in the criminal court. And those properties can then be used in other ways to reduce crime.
But that falls under your purview as well?
Yes, it does. But the Asset Forfeiture Act prohibits municipal governments from taking that into account, because what would happen is, they would find, okay, well, you know, the city, the mayor's office, I'm not saying they do this, but they could. They could say, well, you know, they're getting this much money because Pookie and Man Man's cars were stolen, were taken through asset forfeiture of the home. So we know the DA's office needs X, but we'll just give them X minus $8 million. And they'll just, because that in some ways might incentivize a prosecutor to do things, to get more money-
Excellent.
-to run what should be governmental functions. Public safety is a fundamental function of our city government, and should be, and our office should be funded appropriately, regardless of if we seize 100 houses or we seize none.
I got it.
And so really, everything that, in a perfect world, the city of Philadelphia would fund the district attorney's office appropriately. And anything that came from asset forfeiture would go to do other types of crime preventative strategies that are gravy.
Just quickly, sir, the Senior Law Project, Senior Law Center-
Yes.
-working with crimes against seniors, also dealing with issues of property theft and other things like that, is in desperate need of support. They could testify to the wonderful contribution that they've made. How do you work with that?
Well, we have, we work very well with the Philadelphia Corporation for the Aging and Senior Law Project, Assistant District Attorney Deb Nixon, I've appointed her to serve as like our liaison and to go out and talk with seniors, as I do often when I'm at community meetings with you, about how they can prevent themselves from being the victims of a majority, slew of financial crimes. The majority of seniors that are the victims of these economic crimes are victimized by their own family members, who have access to their checking accounts, who have access to their debit cards. And so we work with those entities to go out and to educate the public. We had a recent press conference where we had representatives of the Senior Law Project, the Philadelphia Corporation of Aging come in, when we had arrested an individual who was posing as the district attorney, and calling an individual, a 93-year-old, World War II veteran. And he had swindled, basically, $93,000, I believe, from this man, by calling him and saying that he was a district attorney, that he was gonna send this defendant now to his home to pick up money, because the gentleman had, you know, had trash out in front of the house, and he owed this amount of money. The city was gonna do this to him if he didn't pay $60 or $80 or $200 at a time. And so we had a press conference with them, because there are many scams that go on, and we wanted to bring to the public's attention how seniors can be protected.
Thank you so much, Mr. President.
You're welcome, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brown. She's not here. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Good afternoon, Mr. DA.
Good afternoon.
I'd like to go into a little bit of a different direction, and I'm just saying that because it's really not nuts and bolts stuff about the function of the office. But just something I'm curious about in my work as a legislator. These days, it seems that, you know, the balance of where our state government focuses, where it sends its money, where it prioritizes development in our state, or not developing our state, is really kind of, to me, as a Philadelphian, a balance between Pennsylvania versus Philadelphia. And it seems like there are those who see Philadelphia as a leader of our state's economy, innovation, and growth. And there's others who see Philadelphia as a drag on the rest of the state. Most of the people who think it's a drag are outside of Philadelphia, and most people who think it's a leading area are in Philadelphia. As district attorney, who, as you go out to deal with not only the legislators in Harrisburg for funding and support, but also interface with other district attorneys and prosecutors across our state, I'm interested to know, how is your standing among them? And I'll preface that by saying that I always assumed, as a law school student, and then as a young assistant DA, that in Pennsylvania, the premier district attorney's office was Philadelphia.
You are correct.
Thank you. And good to know that's still true. And I also assumed that, you know, our experiences in Philadelphia were common to prosecutors all over the state, until one of my friends went to a prosecutor's convention and came back telling me that nobody believed any of the stories that he told. They thought he was a tall-teller, because nobody else in the state had the experience, the experiences of Philadelphia prosecutors in the type of crimes, the amount of violence, just the whole variety of crimes that we have. And so there being kind of a disconnect between Philadelphia and the amount of crime it deals with and its processes, just the volume of it and the seriousness of it, and then the rest of the state, how are you able to bridge that gap? Do you have challenges in dealing with your fellow prosecutors, the law enforcement community, and the state in getting the money, getting the support, and making that case for Philadelphia?
All right. Thank you. I have the pleasure of serving as the legislative chairperson for the Pennsylvania District Attorneys Association. There are 67 district attorneys from our Commonwealth. Each county is represented by a district attorney. And I serve on that executive board. Mr. Rowe is the chief of our legislative unit. But our legislative unit comprised of Mr. Rowe, there was Kate Thurston, was his assistant, Ms. Jillian Roth, who is here, function as the legislative arm of the Pennsylvania District Attorney's Office. They spend approximately two days a week in Harrisburg, working with state lawmakers for every issue that you can imagine. And I'm sure that your colleagues, where former state representatives, Johnson and O'Brien, would testify that laws really don't get passed that relate to public safety unless the District Attorneys Association and the Chief of Police Association has really given it their imprimatur. So I agree with you with that. As it relates to, yes, we are seen in many ways as the premier district attorney's office. Many of the district attorneys across the state, the district attorney of Snyder County, the district attorney of, let's see, Wayne County, the district attorney where Gettysburg is, what's that? That's Adams County, are all former Philadelphia Assistant District Attorneys, who came to the big city, learned, and then went home. The current Lieutenant Governor of North Dakota was an Assistant District Attorney. He went home, they made him the Attorney General for that state, I'm sorry, the U.S. Attorney for that state. So we have, we do a great job in training prosecutors. But above and beyond that, you know, I said, when I took over this office in many ways, the criminal justice in Philadelphia was not held in the highest regard diplomatically, put. Recently, the Bureau of Justice Assistance and the Association of Prosecuting Attorneys chose the method in which we implemented geographic prosecution to be a national model, to be replicated in other places. And I have a copy of that document right now here in the courtroom, I'm sorry, City Hall Council chamber. So, you know, we are doing things. David Kennedy says, our reincarnation of focused deterrence is the best example of it. So we're doing things here. Our challenge is to ensure that we are receiving the appropriate funding. The district attorney of Fulton County, a county of 14,850 people, has the same exact salary as the district attorney of the city of Philadelphia. And, you know, so our challenges are to ensure that we fund programming that will allow us to move to this new paradigm of what I believe it means to be an American prosecutor. My job isn't just mere excellence in the courtroom. It's doing all that we can to prevent crime, all that we can to reduce recidivism. And those aren't things that are dollar-to-dollar, apple-to-apple with agencies like those that just testify immediately before me. The function of government is to keep its people safe, to educate them. We need to find what is the best way, what is the appropriate percentage of this city's budget, if we're gonna make Philadelphia a safer place, to be that place that the rest of the state won't think is sodomy and gomorrah, where we will be able to attract the best minds that come here to go to school, to stay here, to create the jobs that we need, because people will feel safe. The reason why people, I'm understanding, I didn't do my own, you know, research, but people leave because they feel so, they don't feel safe, or because they feel so their children aren't gonna be giving the best education. If we can address those two things, I think, again, Philadelphia will be a premier city.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Blackwell?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. DA and company. I only wanted to thank you, I said it last year, these are exciting times. We like our DA, who's involved in issues that affect us all. And so we thank you for the interest and involvement in myriad issues.
Very well. I thank you for your support and your leadership last year in ensuring that we receive the adequate funding. I appreciate all the community walks and community meetings that you attend with myself and members of my staff. Thank you.
Thank you. My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Johnson?
I wanted to talk about something we council president talked about briefly, which is the issue of guns. I know you have been doing an effective job in building a collaboration and working with the Philadelphia Police Department. And obviously, you know, and I talked to you about this, just you and I were talking, and I talked to Chief Ramsey about it as well, and I'm still trying to work towards some level of resolve in the future. And I always stand firm that there are no gun factories in Pointe Breeze or Richard Island. Guns are coming from somewhere. When we find those guns, the level of tracking the individuals who straw purchase, or the individual who, make sure I got the terminology right, who are engaged in dealing with guns. Now, we got drug dealers, we got-
Gun traffickers.
Gun traffickers. And so I know some of the background is with Attorney General's Office, in some aspects, maybe U.S. Attorney's Office, but what can we do to be supportive of your efforts in moving forward? Because I'm still a strong advocate of choking that pipeline. And as a young man watching, be frank with you, folks carrying the bivers into me turning 40 and watching young guys with Glock 44s and 45s, and really questioning, okay, where are these guns coming from? And how do we choke that supply, or where's the will, as you would say? There's a lack of will to fund your office adequately so you can do your job. And I'm always looking at their will from the law enforcement side, be it district attorney's office, Philadelphia Police Department, U.S. Attorney's Office, to really go after those folks who are flooding the streets of Philadelphia and any other urban environment across the state, but in this case, Philadelphia, with those guns. Because the guns are still coming from somewhere. I always saw young people, you shouldn't pick it up anyway.
Right.
And it's because a crack pipe is there, or a blunt is there, doesn't mean you pick up the blunt and smoke it, or smoke the crack, same thing with the gun. But the reality is, when I see the heavy artillery, that some of these young men are getting arrested with them, like, okay, let's put him under the jail. And I heard in a testimony saying, like, some folks we're not gonna be sympathetic to, but guns are coming from somewhere. So just from your professional insight on how we can better wrap our arms around choking that pipeline of guns that are flooding our streets.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. I'd like to thank you for your efforts, even before you became a councilman, and with your peace-not-guns efforts. So I want to thank you and recognize you for that. But we have to have a holistic approach. But your first part of your question related to the actual tracking of those handguns, where are they coming from? And the most recent information I received, I believe from Commissioner, Deputy Commissioner Ross, was that the average handgun, once the person's arrested and found to be in possession of these firearms, is about eight years prior they were purchased or stolen. But the last record of them was about eight years ago. Right? So that, I think, attests to the fact that we have way too many guns flooding our streets. And so to address the gun violence, I think we have to have a holistic approach. Now, one of the things I need counsel to do, if you want to help me, is that I have been able to get the rest of the District Attorneys Association, going back to Councilman O's question, to agree with me. And they unanimously agree with me that we should have a two-year mandatory minimum for people that unlawfully possess a firearm in the city and county of Philadelphia. And why is that important? Well, if we look at the homicides in 2012, there were 334 in the city of Philadelphia. 85% were committed with handguns. But not one of those was caused by a person with a license.
Let's go back, not cutting you off, sir. I'm with the two-year mandatory. I'm with five-year mandatory, you get caught with a gun, because you shouldn't have the gun. I'm with that part. I'm looking at specifically the tracking of, or the investigating of, where those guns are actually coming from.
Right.
We're gonna lock you up and get caught with it if it's an illegal gun. But I'm always still stuck that the guns that the young men are getting in their hands, I know they didn't go in the store and purchase them, so where's that effort to put that pressure on that pipeline? The same way folks would say-
Right. And so we have a Gun Violence Task Force-
Yes.
-which is funded through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, where we have agents from the Attorney General's Office, working with assistant district attorneys to go after those that are trafficking in those handguns, primarily to go after the straw purchasers. So that's one angle. But the other issue that you're, I think you're trying to get at, is when defendant, whatever you want to call him-
Pookie.
When Pookie gets arrested, and he's in possession of a firearm, we would like to find out, where did you get the gun? Well, the defendant does have a Fifth Amendment right. He's gonna be charged with unlawful possession of the handgun. We have to prove his guilt beyond a reasonable doubt. He does not have to say anything when those police officers are asking him questions. We just can't shake it out of him, nor would I want to have any procedure that would be violative of the defendant's constitutional rights.
Right.
Has to be, explain what his rights are, give up those rights freely. Hopefully, we could find ways to identify where those guns are coming from, without the requirement of that, but it's almost impossible.
No one ever told me that particular-
Right. And so what we're finding through focused deterrence, through our Gunstat program, is that a lot of the violence done with guns are gonna be done, a lot of the violence with the Taney and Dickinson murder team.
Yes.
Okay? It might be one gun used in 15 different crimes, in that they circulate that gun for whoever needs it.
That's interesting. All right. Thank you, sir. And I do appreciate-
Thank you, Councilman.
And just for the record, I do appreciate your partnership with the Philadelphia Police Department, as well as Gunstat. And so I do recognize you're doing the best that you can. But I'm always looking for, as we move forward down the line, different strategies just to get that chokehold on the actual, the flood.
Right.
And I know it's tough, because at the end of the day, there's some con- And I know it's tough, because at the end of the day, there's some constitutional things that we have to address regarding the laws. If we can just get on page with just a report of laws on stolen guns-
That'd be perfect.
-that would help us out. And it's, and the purpose of bringing it up, because we also don't want to be in a city where, as these incidents of crime and violence specifically with handguns take place, even though it's an uphill battle, in Harrisburg, we don't give up the fight. And it becomes just an everyday routine as relates to specifically finding out where the guns are coming from, and holding those individuals who purchased these guns accountable for the guns that they purchased. But I do thank you for your partnership with the various law enforcement agencies and staying on top of this case. Thank you, Seth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Excellent points. Councilman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Recently, I introduced Bill 140142, and that will create licensing standards for those providing immigration services. The intent of my legislation is to give immigrants and persons who require assistance with immigration matters clarity on how immigration services should be handled, promote ethical, fair, and honest business practices, and most importantly, preserve public confidence. This bill also presents an opportunity to stop the exploitation and the fraud in our immigrant community. These cases are difficult for a multitude of reasons, one of which is creating a paper trail for prosecution. Two questions. Do you think this bill could aid your office in the successful prosecution of immigration services fraud? And two, has any training been done within your office on immigration and its relation to criminal prosecution?
One, we support your legislation. I believe Ms. Laura Malone, who's a deputy of my pretrial division, I believe testified at the hearing. We need more victims to come forward. And so, anything that we can do to, to end whatever chilling effect there has been, to get these victims to come forward when this has occurred, will be helpful.
And we're meeting with licensing and inspection on complementary issues there as well. I'd like one other question about Pope. Have you done any training in your office in relation to criminal prosecution?
In the, I'm sorry, in the-
Have you, has your office done any training on immigration, its relation to criminal prosecution?
Well, we had a recent continually legal education program, and we had, one of our employees talked about cultural sensitivity, to explain cultural differences so that we can provide the highest quality of services to victims who may be from different cultures. And so, that's one thing. We, our staff speak approximately twenty-seven different languages, and so, we try to do the best that we can to ensure that we're providing the right services to the right people, but we recognize we can do a much better job at it, and we need to do a much better job at it.
I'd like to talk a little bit about the York Street Grand Jury and its relationship to the vacant property legislation that I recently introduced. To give context, Lieutenant Robert Neary and firefighter Dan Sweeney were killed while bottling fire at a large abandoned factory located eighteen seventeen York Street on April ninth, two thousand and twelve. Subsequently, your office launched a grand jury investigation and released its findings on February third of this year. In January, I introduced a bill that seeks to amend the Philadelphia Fire Code, and it provides for requirements to create a vacant property task force, charged with compiling an inventory and database of these properties. It also calls for an inspection team with specific responsibilities when evaluating abandoned and vacant buildings, structures, and premises. Your grand jury makes many recommendations, and it also makes reference to my legislation, but it said it needed further review. So, one, again, to edify, my legislation is calling for the creation of a vacant property task force. Do you think this collaboration can create substantive change to save first responders alive and protect our community? And have you had an opportunity to review that legislation?
All right. Well, one, I'd like to thank you for bringing that up today, because, you know, and I've had a meeting with every council person, and the one thing that has been consistent, I've taken a copy of that grand jury report and provided it to each member of council, because I didn't want the memories of those firefighters, you know, to die with them. And then, we have to do a lot, and I have to speak on behalf of the grand jury. And so, that's why I'm trying to take that report everywhere. And I hope City Council does something to enact several of the recommendations that were made by the grand jury. One, you know, was that the city knew, that there'd be a city ordinance requiring the contractors not be tax delinquent. Also, that an outside agency should perform a complete review of the Department of Licenses and Inspections. That a license and permit application should request additional information, we've talked about that. That LNI inspection process should be improved and violations consolidated for court. Citizens' complaints should be logged and followed up promptly. Cooperation between the city departments should be improved and formalized. These are just some of the, you know, the recommendations that were made. Oh, there he is. I thought you'd stepped away. But we've spoken a lot about this, and I think that your information, the resolution that you proposed is an intelligent one. There are too many vacant buildings in the city of Philadelphia that, at any time, could result in the tragedy that we saw in York Street. And we have to do something to address it. But I know Mr. McCann wants to-
Just one thing, I mean, I think the vacant property task force is an excellent idea. I wonder if it shouldn't be more focused on the larger properties? If, if the, the way the legislation's written right now, it seems like it applies to all vacant properties, but at least the version that I saw previously. But if, if it was more tailored towards those larger properties, which, as you know, Councilman O'Brien, can cause huge problems within a neighborhood, that, that, to me, would be ideal in terms of, in terms of legislation. And I know you know a ton about this, we've talked a lot about it, and some of the things that have been done in other jurisdictions have really focused in on those properties, because they have such a devastating impact on the neighborhood if they burn down, or where, and before that, when they become a nuisance, where people just come in and go into the properties and live in the properties, squat in the properties.
Yeah. The, in the legislation, we specifically identified the large commercial and industrial properties, and we focus on Councilwoman Maria Kiona Sanchez's district, because that's where most of them are located, and she was a pioneer in the land bank conversation, and we predicated a lot of this language off of that. But we would like to move into the other areas as we go forward, and I would like to collaborate with your office in taking the recommendations that you have in the grand jury report, and again, respecting the sacrifice that the Neary and Sweeney families made, and making a comprehensive, most people are looking at our legislation and they're saying we're ninety percent there. I'd like to reach out to your office, take the recommendations that you've identified through your exhaustive grand jury report, and incorporate them into this ordinance.
We definitely support it, and we definitely want to be part of the task force that you've set forth in your, in your ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown?
Thank you very much. During our meeting, Mr. District Attorney, I was most struck by your devoted philosoph, your devotion philosophically to why we need to do better on the prevention side of the ledger. And when DHS came before us, as well as Judge Kevin Dougherty, made it, made it clear to them, which they already knew, that we're all in the same column. It's how, how we can connect these systems better for the prevention side of the equation. And yet to come before is the School District of Philadelphia. So, where do you believe we can do better? Where do you believe the gaps are in tackling this issue of truancy? Because if we can capture and get their attention at that stage, we stand a far better chance of not seeing them go through the system.
Right. And thank you very much. I also serve on the National Board Directors of Fight Crime, Invest in Kids. And what we find is that every one hundred, every one hundred dollars invested in early childhood education projects to save us seven hundred dollars on prison costs. So, that's one aspect. We have to invest in early childhood education. We have to invest in programs that allow safe havens for kids after school. Those are the times when more crimes are committed by kids and against kids.
That's right.
And we have to have a safe place for them. But as it relates to truancy, I think in many ways, truancy is the number-one indicator, of course, for criminal behavior. The number-one thing people have in common that get arrested in Philadelphia is that they didn't finish high school. We know that high school dropouts are eight times more likely to go to state prison than a high school graduate. And more tragically, here in Philadelphia, we know that if you are a high school dropout, you are twenty times more likely to be a homicide victim. So, I believe we do all that we can to reduce truancy. And so, the first things I did when I became the District Attorney, I spoke with the deputy of our Juvenile Division, Mr. George Mosey, who's here, who's done a lot of great and innovative things to work with schools and work with students and teaching curriculum on conflict resolution and being better citizens, but we have to reduce truancy. So, I hired a woman, Dr. Rachel Pereira, who has a bachelor's degree, a master's degree, a PhD in higher education. She also has her law degree from Penn, where she was a president of the Black Law Students Association. And I hired her to be my truancy reduction officer, to try to replicate what was done in San Francisco. The District Attorney of San Francisco, Kamala Harris, she's now their Attorney General, made a significant impact in reducing truancy-
Okay.
...by holding parents accountable of elementary school students that were chronically truant. And that is something that I've tried to implement here. I'm very thankful that charter schools have worked very well with us. I cannot say the same for the School District of Philadelphia. I have a very good relationship with Dr. Ackerman, with Dr. Leroy Nunnery, with Dr. Height. They both believe we have to do more. But it's this layer of bureaucracy right below them that has thwarted any opportunity for collaboration, meaningful collaboration, with the District Attorney's Office, under the theory of, that we'd be, they'd be violating FERPA, a federal rule where they could not share that information with us. Clearly, the law says if they create an agreement of mutual understanding between them and law enforcement, of which, of course, I'd assert the District Attorney of Philadelphia is law enforcement, we could circumvent that, so that we could send letters to parents of children that are chronically truant, that are elementary school age, and say, "Look, your kid is chronically truant. If you don't go and meet with the principal within thirty days, you're going to get another letter from us." And when that has happened in San Francisco and in San Diego, there's almost a hundred percent compliance-
Change of behavior.
Right. So, we want to get involved after DHS, and Judge Dougherty's doing a lot of great things in Family Corp, but when those systems have failed in third grade, and now the kid has been chronically truant in fourth grade, at that point, give us the name of the guardian, the address, and the name of the child, so we can send a letter. On Gold City letterhead with my signature on it saying, "Go to the principal, or go to your DHS social worker within thirty days." And if they don't, in the next letter, I'm going to say, "You have to come in and meet with George Mosey, the deputy District Attorney for our Juvenile Division." And if that doesn't get compliance, then we'll send them a letter. You know, you failed to do that, we are going to institute endangering the welfare of a child charges against you. You have thirty days to contact us. And then, if they don't do that, then we will bring charges, endangering the welfare of a child felony charges against that parent. But again, our goal would not be to criminalize, not to be to incarcerate that parent, because generally, they have some sort of dysfunction at home-
Yes.
...that has to be addressed. We just want to be the bad cop to DHS's good cop, to get those families the services they need to end the dysfunction.
So, then what becomes the next step for us as champions of this issue, to convene all the parties you've just discussed at the table? Dollars?
We have a lot of great meetings about ending truancy, but I mean-
The School District is at the table?
Yes. So, I need champions such as yourself to say, "Look, work with the District Attorney's Office. How do we solve this issue of FERPA, so that we can share with the District Attorney the names, addresses of those elementary school students that are chronically truant, so they can be a part of the solution?" Again, I recognize, I'm not a school principal, I can't solve all the problems, of course. We just want to work with-
Yes.
...the School Reform Commission in a way that is best utilizing our efforts, our expertise, to be that bad cop, so that we can address the dysfunction and get more kids to stay in school.
So, I hear the assignment. You can trust that I will do the follow-up and follow-through on that, convening those parties, so that we can get, that's an impediment that we need to remove and/or fix.
Thank you. Because if not, we'll just have to seek a, a state legislative remedy.
Mm-hmm.
But that'd be years off. We have kids right now that need help.
Absolutely. And when you hear the stats and the way that you just described, we need to do more right now.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I hear the assignment. Thank you, Mr. District Attorney. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman O?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And I'd just like to put on the record that I believe, in regards to the District Attorney's request, and so many other of the testimony that we've heard, that, that our ability to be successful in lifting up this city is dependent one upon the other, and that if we could have a comprehensive strategy towards approaching particularly Harrisburg, where we need the funding and authorization, I think we'd have a greater opportunity to be successful. When the District Attorney reduces crime, our ability to get dollars for our city increases. When we run our government more efficiently, we have a better chance of getting dollars for our schools. So, very much, you know, the work that you're doing, I think, is an integral part of an overall opportunity for us to improve the conditions of our city in all the areas that you talked about, from education to jobs, to better quality of life, and so forth. But the function of the District Attorney's Office, it cannot be minimized in the importance of revitalizing and improving our city. So, thank you very much for your work, you and your staff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It all works better when we all work together, right? Seeing no other questions, Mr. District Attorney, thank you. Thank you all, your staff. I got to mention-
Thank you, Councilman.
-the man that deals with us every week, Mr. Vernon Price, who does a great job for you. But you all do a great job, and we appreciate all you do for the citizens of Philadelphia. So, thank you very much for being here all day.
Thank you very much for your attention. I appreciate it. Thanks, ma'am.
This committee will stand in recess until Tuesday, April twenty-second, at ten a.m., at which time we will reconvene in Room 400 City Hall, and hopefully, it won't be freezing then.